Welcome Littleton to the Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, May 28. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its changes, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a pretty busy agenda for tonight, starting with reading the mail. At 6:35, we'll do a quick Select Board recognition. Then we have 6:40, department updates for MAPC, Clean and Lakes, Elder and Human Services, and four things from Human Resources. At 8 o'clock, we'll do an appointment to the Littleton Housing Authority. 8:15, we'll do public input. And 8:13, we have a bunch of Select Board discussions for the host community agreements, doing reorganization stuff like liaisons, signing contracts for 36 King Street, three contracts for 36 King Street, the school MSBA project for Shaker Lane, fiscal year transfers, performance evaluations, the orchard, and then we'll get into goal setting, department updates, and an affordable housing grant. 9:40, we'll do minutes, and then hopefully be done by 9:45. So we'll start with mail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be quick. Like to start out, we have a resignation from the position member-at-large of the Littleton Transportation Advisory Council, specifically as the Chair of that, of the Council. And however, he does intend to continue his membership on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. That was by Michael Gruar, G-R-U-A-R. And he was honored to serve the Littleton in its capacity, and unfortunately, he's been overextended and need to refocus some of his time. Current vacancies on the town boards that are appointed by the Select Board. We've got two for the Housing Trust Fund of trustees. We've got one, we've got two citizen-at-large, and one member for the Agricultural Commission. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, committee, Lakes Committee, individuals that the terms are expiring, they have, I'm sorry, that are vacancies there. Conservation Commission, three members term expiring on June 30, 2027, two associates expiring in 2026. Council on Aging, three members' terms expiring in 2027. Council or Council, four members expiring in 2027. Disability Commission, one member with disability term expiring in 2027. Economic Development Committee, one member, no expiration. Historical Commission, three members expiring 2027. Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee, two members expiring 2027. We have, in the event that people want to receive public notifications, that they can go to www.littletonma.org/subscribe, they can receive community impacts, transportation issues, public health concerns, public safety activity, town meeting changes, town events, and soon, town newsletter. We also would like to gift acceptance, alert everybody from the gift of $2,000 from the Ed Walsh Foundation to the PRCE as a donation to the youth scholarship fund to help to pay for youth's programming for families that are not financially able to. And we also have, please participate in our survey, your opinion matters, on the opioid settlement funds. Learn about the funds the town will receive, share your experience. You can get that on the Littleton website, Town of Littleton website. And that is it for the mail.
Thank you.
So we have a recognition of Jonathan Vance and Peter McNeespee, I'm not sure if everyone remembers that, McNeespee, for their actions at the ZVA meeting on April 18, 2024.
Jonathan and Peter here? So come on up.
Come on up, please.
So we have certificates of recognition for both of you to say, "On behalf of the Select Board, for your quick thinking and action at the April 18 zoning Board of Appeals meeting, they resulted in the saving of a woman's life." So it's a certificate of recognition from us. So thank you.
Congrats. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
I like to hear about, I don't know if it's something you guys want to talk about.
Yeah, want to talk. Humble as always.
Yeah. Do you want to get a picture?
Yeah.
Well, everything's going to be downhill from that, probably.
Yeah, basically.
Department updates, MAPC presentation on the Hazard Mitigation.
Okay. Okay. Introduce.
I think I should present on the town's Hazard Mitigation Plan by Martin Hillsturney, the Director of the Department of Metropolitan Planning Council, your regional planning council, and here with me.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Wallach. I'm an Emergency Preparedness Coordinator at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Thanks for having us.
And Jennifer actually did the yeoman's amount of work on this draft plan. It was her first one, worked with me, I've done many of them. But what we have to show you tonight is a draft plan that's been put together over the last almost year with the guidance of a team, a local hazard mitigation team from the town. Martin, who is here, sort of coordinated that team, as did Ryan, actually. And it had multiple members from other town departments, emergency management, public works, planning, et cetera. So we really want to thank the team. We had a series of four meetings and workshops over the last nine or 10 months. They were all so helpful in bringing forward local knowledge and information to make this plan more useful and more customized for the town. So we do have a PowerPoint presentation to sort of give you an overview of the plan. I'll start by just giving you an overview of what hazard mitigation means, in case that is not a word that just rolls off the tongue. It's not always a household word. Hazard mitigation is a planning process that FEMA has put in place nationwide through an act that was passed in the year 2000, so 25 years ago. It was a new thing back then to develop plans for communities to think ahead before a disaster happened. They already had lots of plans and processes for disaster response and recovery, and they still do. But at that time, it was a new measure to think about what can we do to make communities less vulnerable to the kind of hazards we know we're having and reduce the amount of damages that occur when these natural hazards occur. So the planning process was put in place with the goal of having every town and city in the whole country develop one of these kinds of local plans. Not a mandate, didn't have to do it, but they put a pretty good incentive in there to do it. If a town has an approved plan, it's eligible for some pretty significant FEMA funds for project grants to actually fund projects on the ground that will actually help, like drainage improvements and stormwater and that sort of thing, generators, lots of things of that sort. So that's kind of the incentive. And when this plan is done, which it nearly is now, when we've submitted it to MEMA and FEMA for review, after they approve it, then you will actually have the next five years eligibility for these grants. And these grants are now actually bigger than they have been in the past because of the federal infrastructure dollars have been put into them. So there's serious money available in these, they call them brick grants. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We'll head through, yeah, thank you. So hazard mitigation, if you look at the green box on the upper left, sort of the overall definition that I think MEMA came up with to kind of give the elevator pitch, what do you mean hazard mitigation? Reducing the impacts of natural hazards through strategies that include policies, projects, and programs. So there's a whole sort of slew of different things that fall under that umbrella, and we'll talk about what some of those are. We approach hazard mitigation plans with the questions you see in the bottom left. What preventative actions are being taken now? Because we recognize towns have already been dealing with these hazards for many years, and you have a lot of things in place already. So we want to get a baseline, what's in place now. When we have that, we can say, where are some gaps? Where are some areas you can improve or strengthen the programs you have or add new elements? So that's when we ask the second question, what additional actions can the town take to make yourself less vulnerable and more resilient in the future? That's the basic philosophy of these plans. Focused on a whole series of natural hazards, the list you see on the right here. So these plans are not about human cause, like chemical spills or radiological, they're not about homeland security, terrorists, there's all other plans about that kind of thing that the feds have, the state has, that you have parts of. This is just focusing on hazards, but it's focused on all categories of natural hazards. So you see on that list flooding and wind and winter, geologic even, things like earthquakes, even things that may not be quite too likely to happen, but if they could happen, you at least want to be aware of them. But more focus on the plan is put on those kinds of hazards that you actually experience or are more likely to experience here. Change on, thank you. So yeah, this is one of those little animated slides. It's just to make the point, FEMA was trying to put this program together to try to slow down this cycle of disaster rebuild, disaster rebuild, which is something that maybe not so much in Littleton, you haven't had the most severe hazards in this town, you're fortunate in that. But if you think about some of our coastal communities in particular, this really does happen. And rather than just keep seeking money into an endless cycle, they wanted to see if they could interrupt or slow down that cycle by making the areas that are subject to these hazards more resilient and less suffer, maybe not eliminate the damages, but reduce the amount of damages that occur. Thank you. So hazard mitigation is a broad term that includes a number of specific types of measures. This is one way that we organize our thoughts about what are the categories of actions in hazard mitigation. Some of them are preventative actions, some of them are actions to protect property that's already in harm's way, that was built years ago before we had the regulations to say about floodplains now. But we have to somehow coexist and live with the fact that some of our older development is more in harm's way, and other things like elevating buildings, elevating just the utilities within the buildings, other kinds of protection measures can be put in. Looking at public education, it's an important part because it's not only what the town can do, it's what homeowners, landowners, small businesses can do for their own properties to help themselves even more. And then looking at natural resources, wetlands, floodplains, protecting them and letting them do the job as much as we can to buffer us from some of these hazards. Structural projects, the second one to the last on this list, are the big-ticket sort of infrastructure issues that we all identify in many cases where if you have a drainage problem, it might be able to be solved by some kind of infrastructure upgrades. And that's where some of those federal grants can actually help you pay for those projects if they're laid out in the plan and kind of the rationale for the need for them is talked about in the plan. After the plan's approved, you could actually pursue some of those kinds of projects through federal grants and also through some state grants and other funding sources. The last measure is emergency services, and the idea here is that the emergency services and the facilities they rely on, fire stations, police stations, public works yards, they themselves should be protected so that they can then continue to offer service to the rest of the town. The last thing you want is for those to go off first, and then you don't have the capability to help anyone else in the town. So those are just a few ways of thinking about what could come under hazard mitigation. That's why I say it's not one thing, it's an umbrella term, lots of pieces that go into it, and this plan will look at many aspects of that. We also have been integrating climate change more and more into these plans in recent years because we're starting to see with flooding, with higher intensity rainfall events, clearly these are indications of some of the signs of climate change that we're seeing already. And all of the projections from the international, to the national, to the state studies are showing that these trends are unfortunately going to be continuing and becoming more hazardous. So we'll take that consideration into the plan as well when we're talking about these hazards. So the planning process that we go through to develop this plan, as I mentioned, it's really about the local team, and they're on the right side. You see some of the folks, not the names of the people, but the names of the positions. So it's a really good complement of all the boards, commissions, and employees in the town that have some aspect or the other on this. And you can see it's a multifaceted plan, no one department can do it all. There's a big role for public works, there's a big role for emergency management, there's roles for all these other boards on here as well. So the local team at four times, as I mentioned, they provided really good, specific information to us that we documented and put it into a format that is kind of the FEMA-approved format. They like to see these plans to be structured in a certain way. So we take the local data, we translate it, I say, we translate that into FEMA or FEMAEs, and then make it so that it's something useful to the town but also approvable by FEMA. And so here is the timeline, and we're on the all-the-way-right side with the stars, but almost the last point in the process. We have gone through all the steps you see here, please, with the team meetings prior to this, to develop the data, develop the recommendations to the plan. We had a previous public meeting a few months ago with this board, but over in the other building. And here we are, really at the last stop before having a plan that's ready to turn into MEMA and FEMA. And at that point, it'll be a draft plan that they will review, comment on, perhaps ask us for revisions, and then once they're satisfied, approve the plan. So we're really getting into the home stretch here. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to talk a little bit about just some of the highlights, and we're going to concentrate a little bit more in this plan here. Actually, no, there's a few more I'm going to do before I turn it to her. Once you go to the next slide here. She's going to talk about the recommendations that are, that's really the heart of the plan. But just leading up to the recommendations, that laying the groundwork and that, what I said earlier, looking at the baseline of what you have in place already and where the hazards are. This is, these last couple of slides are examples of the content of the plan, a very close inventory of all the critical facilities in town. And again, that team with our local knowledge of the town, different members contributed in to where these sites are. You can see the kind of things that are on here, critical town facilities, municipal facilities, infrastructure like pump stations and water towers, et cetera, and community facilities that you consider critical because they might need assistance more than the average person, like, you know, schools, elderly housing, medical facilities. So there's like a range of things that we call critical facilities. They're not all in the same category, but they're all critical for different reasons. Every one of those is mapped on that map. I know you can't see it at this scale, but in the plan, you can take a look at it in more detail. And there's an inventory, like an Excel sheet, they're all listed out with the attributes of those. And we map then, where are these located in comparison to the flood areas and some of the other hazards? So which ones of them might actually be in places that you want to be aware of, the facility could be more at risk? We also map, I know this map at this scale looks the same, it's the same base map, but what we have on this one are the locally identified hazard areas. And most of these are either areas that are known to flood locally, not the FEMA floodplains, they're in the map, but locally, local knowledge, usually from public works telling us about, you know, roadways that flood, a few places where you have beaver problems that create flooding, et cetera. Those are all mapped out and described in the plan. Also, we have some areas, you can see the red circles that are potential wildfire risks, mostly some of your larger open forested areas. And I think there's a few winter hazards and other things. So this is like a very detailed description of, very specific to Littleton, where the hazards are in your community. The plan, as I mentioned, looks, there's a lot of focus on flooding because it's the most common hazard among the list, but we do look at all the other hazards, extreme temperatures, which is becoming more and more of a focus these days, drought, also becoming more since we've had three of them since 2016, wildfires. I guess you haven't fortunately had any big ones here, but there have been others right around the state. And whenever we get a drought, that makes those areas even more vulnerable to wildfires. Earthquakes, well, we had one in New Jersey a few weeks ago. It was a 2.1 or something. So again, we don't get big ones here, fortunately, but we look at that. And extreme rainfall, the map on the right, lower right, showing a cluster in the whole northeastern of the US area is subject to more extreme rainfall. So we put together an inventory with the town's help of what measures you already have in place in the town. This is that baseline of activity. And they're categorized by things that address flooding, things that might address rushfires, winter hazards, you can see here, wind and winter, or multiple hazards. So that's in the plan, this is just a punch list, but they're all described in the plan. And then that leads us to knowing where the gaps are from the existing, the ability to put together a list of recommended mitigation measures. That's really the whole point of doing this plan. And that's.
Thank you, Martin. Yeah, so this list that I'm about to go over is what we were able to come up of the mitigation measures that should be worked on in the next five years. So I'll run through these briefly, starting with the flood hazards. As Martin said, that's one of the biggest issues that we're seeing across the state and especially in Littleton. So for the first one, it was about creating future open space parcels for flood mitigation. This is a continuation as well from what was done in the previous plan. This was a high priority. Adding on to that, open space residential development bylaws and adopting cluster by right. Moving on from that, concentrating development in existing areas of development. Again, there was a lot of talk about beavers leading to floods, so there was talk about also creating a beaver mitigation plan that was of high priority by the group. And then also doing extending wetland buffer zones, hydraulic analysis of flooding issues in the Mill Pond area, since I know that came up from several folks in the group as well as in the survey that we did of the town. And then identifying more rain gardens and water retention basins was set forth as a medium priority by the group. And then also making the public aware of watersheds, sub-basins, and with signage at water divides. So for wind and extreme weather, as you see, installing wind-resistant windows in public buildings was medium. For wildfire, it was again, talking about maintaining fire access roads, that was a continuation from the last plan. And then also a continuation was doing public education on brushfire prevention. For winter hazards, assessing the snow loads on flat building roofs was added with a medium priority. And then with geologic hazards, conducting a feasibility study on how to make town facilities earthquake resistant was added. Might seem interesting since there are not many earthquakes in the area. However, for the FEMA and MEMA review, it is highly recommended that we do put measures in each of these categories. So that's why some of these things might seem a little bit more of a stretch than others. However, they're still needed to make sure that we're covering all of our bases. So moving on from that, for extreme temperature hazards, you see there's a medium priority for continuing to add green roofs and solar canopies. And then a high priority of updating site plan requirements to eliminate heat islands in parking lots and to increase shade, which is something that's happening more and more around this area. For drought hazards, you see include drought tolerant landscaping, including looking at drought resistant grass seed, that was given a high priority, as was continuing and enhancing that Boxborough in Littleton Water Conservation Project that was talked about in the last plan as well. There's also decided for a medium priority to include the rain barrels and drought resistant grass seed in future projects as well for drought hazards. And then again, the public education piece, this time on water consumption, specifically on lawns. And then, as Martin said, there's a lot more emphasis now on climate resiliency in these plans, so that is why we talked giving high priority to climate considerations and sustainability, a priority in budgeting and capital investment plans, and then also exploring producing a climate action plan, an immuneable sustainable action plan using the Sustainability Committee for that. And then invasive species, this was something that came up quite a bit in our four meetings with the town, really focusing on how to reduce those invasive plants. For example, garlic mustard pole was mentioned, and kind of combined with the town-wide week-long cleanup effort, as is done in successfully neighboring towns, that was given a high priority as well. And that was new to this iteration of the plan.
Thank you.
Got it.
So that's pretty much the blow-by-blow of the kinds of mitigation measures the plan recommends. There's a little more description in the plan. For each one of them, there's a cost estimate, a range at least, a high, medium, low. There's a range of what years, over the next five years, it's recommended to think about. There is identification of who in the town would be the lead, like would it be public works, would it be the fire department, you know, the different departments planning if it was a bylaw issue? And there's also a section in there that just, you saw the priorities, they're all listed in there. It's all done in a big matrix, a big table in the plan itself, which we thought was a little bit too much to put on a PowerPoint slide, but just even running through them, item by item, there's a little more detail, a little more words on the slide than we normally have, but this is the focus of the plan, so we wanted to make sure you saw what was in there. So now that we have the draft plan put together, we're at the point where we are tonight, in fact, launching a public comment period, and this plan is available, so not only the board and other town members, but the members of the general public are welcome to take a look at the plan. It's available to be downloaded from a special website page we set up for it that you see here, www.mapc.org, that's our website, slash resource, dash library, not, excuse me, didn't get that type wrong, slash Littleton, that's an HMP. That's what you get when you use a page for a template from another project. So it's Littleton HMP, obviously. From that site, you'll see a place to just click and download the plan as a PDF. And we're saying, please send comments if anyone likes to read it and actually have comments. They're welcome to do that. We're asking if anyone can get comments to us by June 18. If so, so that the town can then take any comments, finalize the plan, and turn it in by the end of the month to MEMA. So that's kind of the next immediate steps. The cover of the plan looks like that little graphic you see right there, it has a picture of Long Lake on it from here. So we try to find the nicer, interesting-looking places to put on the cover of the plan. So that's our next steps, is just having this, if you could maybe advance one more slide, I think we have just our thank yous and our email address. And right there again, download the plan, again, it should say Littleton, obviously. And littletonresilience@mapc.org is an email address to which comments can be sent to us for the plan. And with that, we'll see if you have any questions and...
Just to add to what Martin said, we'll probably put that out under our latest news section, so we can blast that out to people, and they'll be able to work with the website that Martin highlighted and with the correct address, and you can receive comments that way as well. So I think we get, I don't know what the full number is, but it's a very high number of people that will get that blast and take a look.
That's great, that's great. We want people to be aware of it because it affects the town. This is the kind of plan that often kind of goes under the radar because it's not like everyone's aware, not everyone, but a lot of people are aware of your comprehensive plan, your master plan, your open space plan. There are more common plans for folks to be engaged with. This one is a little newer on the block compared to those, and we really want to promote like folks being aware of what's in this plan and letting us know, you know, does it cover the hazards that you're concerned about in your town? I think we have a good handle of that from the town officials that work, but we're opening this to the broader town at this point, to make sure we're not missing anything.
To the Chair, I wrote a few things down. So does this integrate with the FEMA's Emergency Operations Plan or is it like a separate?
It's pretty separate. This is what they call a pre-disaster plan. It doesn't directly involve what you do when there's a disaster and you're responding.
Strictly.
That is your comprehensive emergency management plan, CEMP, SIMP. And every town, and actually Jennifer knows a lot about those because she's actually written those kind of plans for many towns. That's what kicks in when you actually have an emergency and you need to respond to it, and then even longer term after response than recovery. So think about it in pre, during, and post the disaster, and this is, in fact, FEMA used to use this term, this is pre-disaster mitigation.
So with the expectation, with the mitigation part of this, the cost will come with the preparedness?
It's supposed to reduce the cost of what you're, how much you're going to have to respond to, because it'll be, hopefully, less damage occurs. Everywhere from human life injury to damage to property reduced, hopefully, with some of these measures, and the cost of those responses in recovery, less, hopefully. That's the whole idea.
And this is a FEMA-sponsored?
It is a FEMA-sponsored plan, and it's run in the state by MEMA. So FEMA turns these national programs over to the state programs, and that's our massive emergency management.
I have a question. It's easy, I think, to measure the impact of, you know, flood, but it seems like climate change often is more insidious and way more expensive. If you look at what's happening in Mexico City or South Africa, like the lack of water, it's like systemic and it's terrible. So I'm curious if FEMA is acknowledging that and sort of focusing more on the long-term slow burn problems than...
This is a great question, and I don't know if I'm the best person to give the definitive answer to that, because it's a FEMA thing, but my reading of what they're doing, first of all, they are beginning to recognize this. If you looked at the FEMA guidelines for these plans eight or 10 years ago, the word climate wasn't even in there. They didn't even like, it wasn't even on the radar. We began putting, as MAPC, climate considerations into these plans, and then all of a sudden, about five years ago, FEMA said, oh, we have new guidelines, and guess what? It's mandatory that you consider climate. Okay, well, thank you. We've kind of been trying to do that already. So they get that now. What they're going to do with that is still exactly what the result of that... What they're going to do with that is still, exactly how, what the result of that's going to be down the road, is a little harder to know, but I will say that that BRIC grant program, and by the way, I'm using, sorry, I'm using an acronym, the grant program that you could have access to is called Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, B R I C. That's a big grant program. You can get six and seven bigger grants out of that. And I think that you're starting to see, they will direct some of that funds to projects that are intended to mitigate climate impacts. There's a little bit of a gray area. If we've always had flooding, and you're mitigating flooding, are you just mitigating historic flooding, or are you mitigating future flooding? Well, it's a longer gradient. Like, we've always had flooding, we'll have it in the climate, it's just going to make it likely more frequently, and maybe deeper. So, it's like not a whole new tech, a whole new hazard that comes out of nowhere. There are other hazards that are sort of coming out of nowhere that we haven't almost had at all before. So, things like some of these invasive species that we just never had, that's a good example. Invasive species is the first time really being in these plans now. Five years ago, they weren't mentioned either. So, the good news is that MEMA and FEMA are trying to evolve these plans. It's a five-year cycle, so every time they do that, and we're working under the auspices of a similar state-level hazard mitigation plan that the state put together, and actually just, they have to do a five-year cycle too. They just approved the newest one in September of last fall. The previous one was 2018, five years before that, and each of these has ratcheted up how much climate work. In fact, the statewide plan, they're no longer calling it Hazard Mitigation Plan, they're calling it the Resilient Mass Plan. So, they really are fully integrating climate into the state plan, and we're trying to mirror that in what we're doing more with plans with towns and cities.
Thank you.
Really quick question. You just talked about a five, is this a five-year updated?
It's a five-year update, that's right. So, this plan will be good, presuming FEMA approves it a little bit later this year, until 2029.
So, with the BRIC grants, are we considered in a, are we a community of disaster resilience in the resilient zone? Will we qualify?
You'd be qualified. You don't, there's no special category. As long as you have an approved plan, you can apply for these grants. It's not like some places are more qualified than others. Any town that has an approved plan in the whole country is eligible to apply. Now, will your grant get funded? It's competitive, so the more you can show that, how serious the hazard is and how much damage it does, that's where, like, the actual grant application you put together will have a better chance of actually being funded. But it's not like, oh, we'll fund grants from these towns over here, but not from those over there. They'll fund a grant from any town that has an approved plan.
And with an approved plan, does that make us, aside from the BRIC grants, that help us with other federal or state grants?
It actually helps you with probably other state grants, because the Massachusetts Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, MVP, which, as you know, this town did the initial planning process for that. There's some pretty big grants there for action, what they call action grants, for implementation projects, and some of those can mirror what's in the federal grants, or supplement, or if you're not quite eligible for a federal grant, maybe you can get. So, that's actually a very important second revenue stream that you can tap into. Now, they don't require you to have a FEMA-approved plan, but it helps if you do. It does. It's competitive and it helps.
I can add to that already. Last one I have for me is, did Leominster have a plan before their flooding issues?
You know, Leominster's not in our region, so I can't speak to it. I wondered that same thing. I mean, every time we have a town that has a really severe impact, like the tornadoes in Springfield and Munson and whatever, most of those communities probably did have a plan, because almost every town in the region has one of these plans. And when you get an event like that, that no one could have predicted, at least not the severity of it, a little bit like the plan is, it goes beyond what a plan could probably even help you with.
Go to recovery pretty quick.
It's, you're now in the more recovery mode, and then you may be thinking about, okay, how do we do much more resilient mitigation in the future? Maybe the next thing more eligible now for a BRIC grant to do something that would make them more resilient.
Which relies more on history.
Yeah, along those lines, one of the questions I had is like, you know, Acton and surrounding towns had a lot of those microbursts type, you know, those high intensity thunderstorms coming through. How does the plan address things like that, or is that just more on the recovery side?
It's probably a little more recovery, because those happen so randomly. We talk about high winds, there is a category on that, and you talk, we saw there's actually one measure, we talked about reinforcing windows in certain buildings. That's one measure that was a wind-related measure. You could, by the way, if you think there's another mitigation measure that should be in here, that's why this is still a draft. So, maybe there's something else we should be doing about wind, that the town should be doing, this is the time to do it. And even after you have this plan approved, and it's there for five years, you can always add to it, or you can always make an amendment to it if something comes up, or someone has an idea, or this is a new grant program. So, you're not locked into this plan for five years. You could actually change it. You will need to change it in five years, but before that, if you see some specific part of it you want to update, you can do that too.
So, along that same lines, I was wondering, like, the sewage treatment plant wasn't mentioned in your infrastructure, and it's like being built now, so since it's not in, it's not, doesn't currently exist, should it be?
I think that that's a good point. If there's a site that you're in the process of either planning, or is it under construction already?
It's under construction.
That should be on the list, and we can add that. That's a good example. Maybe that wasn't thought about, because it actually isn't up and operating. We know that's going to be there, so that, and this is a plan for five, within the five-year period of this plan, that will be there, so absolutely.
You know, another one would be the parking lot at 550 is like one of the heat islands on the map, and if it's going to get completely new developed, like, we can talk about how to reduce the heat island.
Yep, absolutely, but that's a very good point.
I think Jennifer mentioned something about like living roofs or something like that.
Yeah, there's all sorts of different things that are incorporated in there, with, you know, water basins, green roofs, obviously solar panels and that sort of thing.
My other question was about like heating and cooling zones, like, you know, when, you know, the senior center or the police station or any of these buildings we would want to use, is this something that we would outline in this plan that we need?
Yeah, they're talked about in this plan, and I don't remember if there are, but if there are any needs along those lines, what we find in many towns, they may have a center they would use as a cooling center, they haven't maybe have to use it very often, but that would be their intention. But maybe it's got like a rickety old generator. That could be an upgrade, and actually, that could be a grant too.
Or it needs new HVAC systems on there.
Yeah, so upgrades to those facilities to make them work better as cooling or heating centers could be something we would think about as a project, for sure.
And we also do mass care plans at MAPC, and that a lot of it is all tied in, so I've been working on many of those in addition to the comprehensive emergency manager plan, because all of this is kind of like puzzle piece together, and you're able to really do a lot if you are able to do those, this plan and those two as well.
Okay.
It's on a lot of those points.
That's probably something we should look into as we're upgrading the HVAC systems.
Yeah, the battery generators.
Yeah, and generators and...
And shaker lane, if we're going to shaker lane.
Absolutely.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the car, thanks very much.
Thanks, team.
Yeah, thanks to the whole team, really. They just did a great job.
Thank you.
It's good to see light water in there, because of the little perennial maintenance, like, taking care of trees before they become a problem.
Clean Lakes Committee update.
We'll show it to them.
Oh, goodie. Thank you.
Three different ponds, one Speck Pond, Long Lake, and Manawaki in those pictures.
Can you just introduce your?
Oh, certainly. John Folsom, Chairman, Clean Lakes Committee. I represent Long Lake, have for, well, since the inception of the, of the, of the committee, long before we were even part of the town. We have been busy for about 20 years, trying to chase down invasives, trying to keep waterways open, addressing issues that, well, you saw in the, in the recent annual report from last year. And I wanted to briefly go over some of those things, but really focus on, one of the biggest problems we have right now is that's our loss of funding. Two years ago, the Commonwealth decided that the way we were receiving our monies through a cell tower fund at, on property that belongs to the Water Department was not, was not our money to be had. It was money that needed to be used for the enterprise of providing clean drinking water to consumers of the Water Department facilities. So, we lost the savings we had, which amounts to about $400,000, and probably annual income of about $80,000, and kind of knocked the wind out of our sails for a short time. We're still recovering from that, and that's why we're coming to you tonight. As I review the annual report from last year, see that the Water Commissioners have been very generous in this transition time, helping us out with funding for what was a really extreme invasive situation last summer, unanticipated entirely. We had problems with Manawaki that we've never had before, extreme problems at Speck Pond, and those have gone on to recur. We seem to be having, these are recent photos, and this is, this is fresh growth that's just below the surface and taking over again, so we're very disappointed to see that happening. It was difficult to explain last year, but as I alluded to, maybe it was a climate-related sort of event, maybe, well, it was something we have to get to put a finger on. We feel as though in the past, we've been pretty much on top of these things. Most of our lakes, Lake, Long Lake and Spectacle Pond have usually had herbicide treatments in the past. Recently, we've gone into equal harvesting, which is a machine that literally comes along, plucks the invasives right out of the bottom of the, of the lake. It's working very well for us right now. A few things can go sideways, but those are in your notes. But if it's done properly, it's done conscientiously, it pulls a great many weeds out of our lakes and removes that nutrient mass that we have a problem with when we hit it with herbicides. When we hit it with herbicides, we've got dead and dying plant material that goes down and forms one more layer on the bottom of our lakes. This has been going on for, well, for us, for 15, 20 years, but the deposits we put in our lakes are taking a serious toll. All of our roads, storm drains, go directly into our lakes. We get mess, we get, we get nutrient sumps, we get things that feed the weed invasion, and it seems to be increasing. I was hoping for better news this year, so far, not so much. The Water Commissioners, as I said, have been very generous to see us through. I met with Ryan and Gary, a couple of guys from the Water Commissioners, and we talked about things beginning of this year, this calendar year. And of course, it was far too late for us to appear before this board. Gary had explained we're already slashing 300 and a half million dollars from other people's budgets, but we're coming to you now to partner with the Water Commissioners to see if there's some way that we can recoup some of the income that we lost through the decision of the Commonwealth. For this year, we went to CPC, and we obtained funds to address our problems at Long Lake, at Dolphel Pond, which is down Newtown Road, and also for some renovations at Mill Pond. Those three ponds aren't really part of the purview of the Water Commissioners, because they're more concerned with, say, Spectacle Pond, which is above an aquifer, right there where a well station is. So, anything that would pertain to Spectacle Pond, they would certainly be focused on as something that's worthwhile for their, for their rig pairs to say, you know, these things should be kept after. Somewhat in Lake Manawaki, but not so much. Not at all at Long Lake. Do we have any kind of hope for Water Commissioner supplements or funding? Mostly because we're on an entirely different watershed. We're in the Suezco watershed, drains into the Concord River, down into Sudbury. So, we don't even enter into areas where Littleton draws water from aquifers. So, again, we come back to a funding problem. I know there's not a lot going on, certainly as a result of the town meeting earlier in the month, I realize things are tight, but our pockets are empty. So, we come to you and hope to find some way that, you know, I certainly, we reapply at the CPC. I'm not sure what exactly pertained to what they're doing. The focus is not on water. Another concern we have, of course, townwives, everyone's welcoming conservation land, trying to reach out, create a network, and it's great to surround our ponds with conservation land, it's great protection, it's wonderful, but to skip over the concerns and the needs of those lakes is something we need to sort of change as a town, because we need to, we need to focus on those too. They don't sustain themselves, and we beat them up repeatedly. So, we have, we have that to bring as something we address on a constant basis, but our hands are tied without the funding. So, short of too much else, we can get into weed mitigation, we can get into almost any subject you'd like, but I wanted to put out there the need for funding, for partnership with the Water Commissioners somehow, and maybe it's me going to FinCom, maybe, whatever it takes.
What is the need, John? What is, like, what's the annual spend over the last five years?
You've got, you've got a copy of our projected budget.
Yep.
Everything changed last year?
Yeah.
With this crazy invasive we had, we wiped out our budget right off the bat.
Yeah.
I think the Water Commissioners were trying to ease us through into a transition period to explain that we're going to have to sort of recalibrate where the money's coming from, because the thousands of dollars we had are gone. So, we look at the bottom lines, I think this year...
Where are we? We're at?
Hundred thousand for Speck Pond. Hundred thousand for Speck Pond. It's in the range of $200,000. It seems like it's in a range of 200 to $250,000 a year for a while. There's spikes that come, but it's just anticipated things that we need to attend to, and projects we'd like to take on. There's even projects we haven't reflected in our budget, but that's basically it. And so, I think the Water Commissioners were thinking they contribute 80 to $100,000.
They did about, they did 150,000 last year.
They were very generous.
Yeah, and the rest of it was made up. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could, John, you mentioned that we had sat down to talk about, you know, talk about this, is how to handle this, and I think John also pointed out that some of the aspects of when you put together with a five-year plan in front of you, which is up on the screen, you know, it's changed a little bit because the invasives and there's more involved with that and what that means. So, what, you know, what John pointed out, what we did this year was looking for a mix of funding from the Water Commissioners, who, as John pointed out, are more focused on the areas where are tied to the watershed and water quality, for drinking water quality. And then, the other parts that we were looking at were filled in with the CPC. So, I think the question becomes then, too, I mean, we've been trying to put more and more projects on, onto the CPC and investigating the issue. You know, a lot of these projects are eligible for CPC funding. So, CPC funding provides a consistent, you know, place that we can go to as another resource. I would foresee this, you know, for you, John, as something else that you can continue to go back to on a regular basis, you know, as a complimentary thing to what the LALWD Board is supporting you with. You know, so, funding comes from many different places, and where this is an eligible cost, I would think that, you know, we should be focusing in on that, and where that doesn't, you know, really doesn't impact, I can't say it doesn't impact the tax rate, because we are collecting that, but we're collecting it for these types of projects. Invasives are that, and it does fall in under it. So, you know, I don't know, you know, say, you know, going out and thinking, all right, we need to find a separate resource, when we already have one in place, isn't really, you know, is necessary. There may be times when CPC may not have adequate funding, or may not be able to do everything on your list, and I think that then, you know, presents itself as a separate question. But, you know, I think for the most part, and what we were able to do this year is a model you could probably follow for ensuing...
They were very helpful this year.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, and it's...
There were questions. We don't have, if I could...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We don't, or they don't have a subject. It's open space.
And preservation of the open space, right, right. But that falls as, but it falls as an eligible category. And because it does fall as an eligible category, it's something that we can utilize the fund for, then, you know, those are monies that have already been raised, and, you know, is, is something that then doesn't need to compete against when we need to... that then doesn't need to compete against when we need to replace a replacement backhoe for DPW. So, I think it really becomes a matter of, you know, starting and continuing with that model and refining it and looking ahead to continue to put those applications, again, in partnership with what you're doing with LALWD, which is going to be in that eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollar range. And, you know, we continue to sustain it. And then, if you identify it early enough in the process, then, maybe then it gets brought into the capital planning process, which really kicks off into the, you know, November, December timeframe. So, I think beginning to think about that, knowing when the schedule is, and then, you know, coming to us, if you say, hey, you know, we can't cover something that we deem to be really critical, then we can look at it at that time.
Sure, sure. I want to get a jump on it as quickly as possible.
I understand.
I'm glad.
Just sort of hanging here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Mark, I was just thinking, so, at the end of the day, there's going to have to be a cooperation between the town, CPC, and the, obviously, the water department. Some form of stabilized funding has to come from those three sources, probably. Otherwise, we're going to be in a reactive mode, the town side. CPC is going to be able to help, it's going to take planning on your part, what we need, and have to keep putting in for that. I think between us and water, and besides the capital plan, obviously, when you need things, we definitely can get you on the capital, on the items list, like everybody else. That's where I foresee this immediate problem.
Yeah. And what I'm trying to say is, the first place that they should be looking for beyond, the first place is LALWD and the funding that they provide there for the water sources. That's source number one.
They're, yeah, water's doing that.
Yeah, and they will continue to do that.
But I'm talking about, this is something that potentially, that's not going to be sustainable. We need to start thinking about how we're going to fund this in some regard, or we're going to have to beef up the FinCom's reserve because, oh my goodness, this was a horrible year of invasives, and we're going to need emergency money to handle it.
Last year was a train wreck.
Yeah. So, I just don't, I don't want, I want to get ahead of it, so I don't know if that means we put this as part of the budget this year or we continue to work.
Chase it.
I hate chasing things like this.
So, to credit the committee, the committee's done a lot of that with the five-year plan you've been forward here, so...
It's been a big adjustment.
Right, right.
So, can I ask, because I don't quite understand that, let's say, look at the 2025 budget. So, does that 255 number include the contributions from the water department and CPC?
Yes, it's all combined here.
Okay, so, obvious, so, that's the total spend, but it would be mitigated by those other sources of funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. As the line there, anything under Mill Pond, say, Long Lake, probably Lake Manawaki, would be funded outside of the water.
Got it, okay, got it.
So, another way we could potentially do this is that the water department, instead of paying for this, donates the money to the CPC, right? And then, we can get the match. And then, we should probably, last year, we were talking about whether or not we should be upping the CPC contribution from one percent to two, right? And what we were going to do to fund more in the CPC, and we might want to look at this as something that's going to be a continual expense coming from the CPC that we know of and anticipate in the CPC budget every year in there.
So, instead of paying it out of operational cost, we get the match from CPC, which makes a lot of sense for the taxpayers.
Right.
It does, but the, all of your, everything isn't covered by CPC. I'm assuming that's why the water, some of their money probably could be used for things that CPC can't be used for. Is that correct? Or is, so far, is everything you've asked for, CPC's been able to manage it?
Yeah. We've got four different projects we're funding through CPC. One's recreation, the other three are open space.
Okay, so then, that...
So, we probably should kind of figure out how to get the right people from CPC, finance, water.
I'm not sure legally we could do that because you're, when you're, those funds are coming out of, they're raising funds from fees, so, you know, then to say, okay, we're raising for fees.
Well, even if they're not coming through CPC, we should kind of talk to the water to get, you know, a five-year commitment on what they can fund so we know what we have to fund outside of.
And that was part of our conversation when we all met, was because they were funding some of these things over and above, and they said, timeout, we can't, this isn't a, you know, we don't have an unlimited bank here. So, that was when the idea of the CPC funding to help supplement what was required and what we see, you know, through this five-year plan, what we need to stay on top of. So, I mean, you know, if you look at, you know, the FY25 plan, which I think, you know, John, is mostly funded between the various sources, and then, you know, you start bringing that down, that two hundred thousand dollar range, I don't think any of it is, you know, I don't think any of it is unfundable or that we couldn't necessarily meet. It's just trying to, I think what John and the committee needs is some sort of sense and direction as to where that, you know, how we're going to continue to move forward with it.
Right, right. Which I think is something we should be meeting with CPC to kind of start setting their expectations. And if this is a recurring expense from the CPC, then there may be pushback, I don't know, from them that's like, we can't, we won't be able to fund anything else because this is taking a large percentage of the budget.
I would suggest that we meet with you definitely during every single budget cycle so we know we can get ahead of these unexpected spread potentially, or, but especially in the fall when we're meeting with other departments and we're getting down to the, you know, those final numbers on budgets, if there's something, we see a shortfall that you're really need something for, we can put it as in part of our budget.
Happy to keep you in the loop.
Yeah. That's really amazing.
And I also would add that, you know, we should get, you know, the numbers from what Waters Department can or contribute as early as possible, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can equally...
We can ask them for the five-year plan as well. Mr. Chair, so, one question I have is if we are saying you can keep going back to CPC and we can make a five-year plan, you can go to CPC over and over and over again, at what point does that become maintenance?
Yeah.
And so, and then, another question I had was, so, we were talking about invasives. Assuming FEMA cares about aquatic invasives? We might want to look into whether, because John came to my office hours on Friday and we talked about this a little bit, at what point does it make sense for us to have our own EcoHarvester rather than contracting it out every year if we could get a grant to pay for it?
Yeah. That's a big number, if I recall, we talked about.
It's over a hundred thousand dollars.
It's a big number.
Yeah, but we're paying, we're paying...
But we're paying...
Twenty-seven thousand dollars at Long Lake alone.
Yeah, so, pays for itself pretty quick.
But, sorry, go ahead.
And then, just another point for us all to remember in the future is that if we were to pursue that, we would want to make sure that we've got somewhere to store it once we start talking about the new DPW space.
Yeah. How big is this thing you're talking about?
It's this big.
If I may to address the current...
It's a pontoon boat.
So, in terms of the maintenance, it is ongoing maintenance, and that's allowed under CPC. So, it's, so as an expense that we can charge against it, presuming CPC is, and the committee is allowable to it, then that's where we can direct it. Again, that's part of, all the conversations we were having in the budget cycle is where can we put things that go to CPC? So, and if it keeps coming back, you know, then that's okay. It's not, and I think to the CPC's credit, they were very open-minded and, you know, kind of came a little late in the cycle to them, but they were, you know, they were very cooperative. And I think, you know, meeting with them and continuing to bring that forward is a possibility. And as far as, you know, buying the equipment, that's certainly a thought, but we also then, you know, we need to have the staffing and the training to be able to do the EcoHarvesting. It may be worthwhile, but, you know...
It's a lot to weigh.
You know, so, that's just the, which I don't know. I mean, it's another thing to examine, you know, and whether or not we have that...
Quite a number of communities have purchased these, and then they sell them back to the tradesmen who use them all the time because they just, they just don't want the maintenance, they don't want the hassles, they don't want the headaches.
Oh, okay.
They don't perform on their own. But, one of the biggest problems we had with applying for CPA funds was they're leaning towards capital improvements. They want us to point to a project where you say, you know, we established that trail there, or we bought that conservation land, or, you know, we bought this lake, can't do the, can't do the buy and the lay thing. But the recurring, well, we call it management, we won't mention maintenance, it's way beyond maintenance. And if it's management and it's recurring, then sometimes we get a little bit of flack.
Sure. And John, the other thing, you know, it's not, you know, it's not an endless well, you know? So, that's the thing. These are trade-offs that we have to make, and that's why when we were talking about these, and that wasn't, you guys weren't part of that cycle in the beginning, but when we were talking about where we can fund, you know, any of these projects, we always said, okay, where can we put things to CPC? That was our first thing. So, if these are eligible expenses, you're not necessarily wrong, you know? People love to buy, and that's great and that's wonderful, but, you know, it's like affordable housing. We keep putting money into affordable housing, but we don't, critique is we're not generating, you know? So, it's an allowable use, and I fully respect where you're coming from, but it also means that other things then could potentially be pushed out.
Speaking as a finance director next to me.
No, it's great, I appreciate the push. It really, it really made all the difference this year.
There's no greater resource. I mean, that's, so...
Right. And I think, to John's point, we need to start thinking about public works, you know? It's not just potholes. You know, we're a lake community, and so, our lakes are part of our responsibility for public works as well.
So, can I ask why other waterways in town aren't on the list, like Fort Pond and Beaver Brook?
Fort Pond is not, does not have any public access.
Okay.
And it's really, that's our criteria, you have to have public access as it is. Most of these are great ponds, according to the state, and so, if you have visitors that get on there, you know, it's something where there's a boat launch, there's a beach, what have you. That's the major criteria.
And Beaver Brook?
Beaver Brook is one of our concerns. We test there. We have, we haven't done any kind of repairs or mitigation or anything there over the years, but we test, we examine that. We go back and forth on testing. We tend to focus on lakes. Some years, we focus on streams.
I have a question about the EcoHarvesting. If you spend, you know, if you spend thirty-five thousand dollars on Lake Manawaki, does that mean if you spent seventy thousand, it would be twice as good? Or is it thirty-five thousand is about as much as it, you've reached diminishing returns?
It depends on conditions.
Okay.
And we've had this discussion. If it's a big year for invasives, then that thirty-five thousand or whatever it is may not be sufficient. It's also comparable funds coming from Westford, in the case of Manawaki, because everything's split, the town line goes right through the water body. So, everything's compensated there. They've got a specially big headache. But if we can assess the amount of work that needs to be done, if Long Lake, for example, only needs fifteen thousand dollars worth of work this year, and we budgeted twenty-seven, we wouldn't spend the twenty-seven.
Okay. So, there is a point where you just, you can't run the thing any longer, it doesn't do any more good?
Wouldn't make any difference. Wouldn't make any difference.
How does Westford fund this?
Excuse me?
Do you know how Westford funds their share?
They have allocations. Yeah, Dave, you want to speak on that for a second?
Hi, Dave Barr. I'm also a member of the Westred Health Lakes and Ponds Collaborative, which is an assist organization for clean lakes committee. Westred, for ten years, funded their lake management with CPC funding. And a few years ago, CPC said, this looks like maintenance, so this is the last year we're going to do it. And then, when they went to a town, a line item in the town budget. They still have some CPC funding left over that they haven't spent yet that they're going to be spending in the next year or two. But they moved to a line item in their town budget. This year, they tried to get an override. The base budget with our override was only five thousand dollars for lake management. The override budget included fifty thousand for lake management. The override went through a town meeting, but it didn't pass at the general election. So, they've only got five thousand dollars in the town budget. We do have a hundred thousand left over from previous CPC funding. So, we're working with them to see what we can do for sharing the costs for...
But they have a hundred dozen lakes, right?
They have about eight or ten lakes, of which about four they do treatments on. Yeah. So, they've gone to the same kind of thing. One thing I would also mention about the CPC funding for, it does occur to me that their funding cycle is kind of late in the overall budgeting process by the time they decide whether they're going to accept a request or not. You are already, I think, mostly have your budget already kind of locked down, so that could be an issue.
I think that's also just a matter of planning and timing, was it too? You know, right, knowing that cycle, that cycle for that year. Right, right, yeah, exactly. But I would agree with you, the way that it timed out this year was, you're right, it was a little late, but...
I think their process generally is, they don't, I mean, we can probably get some sense of whether they would be willing to do it or not, but they don't decide until, I think, like, February.
That's right, yeah. But at least from this committee and other CPC committees that I've worked with, I mean, it's not like it's a form of trickery or anything like that, as long as you're working with them early enough in the process. You know, usually, they're working, all working together in good faith, especially as these projects are such worthy initiatives.
Do you have anything for, anything for...
No, I was just, I was just thinking that the, it's just going to come down to communication, at least for the first few years. This is a great first meeting because I think now it made everybody aware of what's going on. I think we're going to end up seeing it in one way or another.
Well, you were key in bringing the whole thing together, so, I appreciate it.
I think this is going to be important. We won't let it, we won't let it get dusty, so, thank you.
We'll keep you all abreast of what's going on. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Director of Elder and Human Services Department requests naming of the new senior center.
Liz is not here today, but there are some members of the Council on Aging that we're going to present.
Yes. I'm going to try to spill in for her. But I'm going to try, so.
Okay.
I'm Marge Payne, Chair of the Council on Aging. And as you all know, we work very closely with Liz, and she did share with me the letter she wrote to you people regarding the naming of this building that's out under construction over there. Had to get my bearings here, I think, so. And then, also, the select board on, let's see, it was on March thirteenth. Did we had our monthly meeting? No, May, sorry. I don't know where or why we had March down, but anyway, May thirteenth, the Select Council on Aging Board had a discussion about the naming of that building also, and we, I sent a memo to your town administrator, to you people, and we agreed with Liz, actually, in her, you know, suggestion, and that is that the building should be named the Center on Shattuck Streets. And the COA Board, though, specified, specifically specified, they would like to see a somewhere home of Elder and Human Services, the COA, and Detrens Agent. Because those are the people that are going to be in that building in the beginning, I mean, down the road in the future, who knows? But I think the key thing is that we all realize it is more than a senior center. The senior center will be, and all of those rooms will be for senior activities during the hours that seniors can use them. So, we request, according to your rules and your laws, you have your rule about new buildings and naming things. So, we're asking that you think about this and consider it. If you have questions for me, there's a few board members present. They can answer questions too, but fire away.
Forever is not in my wheelhouse, but I was thinking the center at Shattuck Street, but there's probably a reason why it's on Shattuck Street, I don't know.
Well, it could be at, I mean, that's, you know, that's a small thing. I think that's a pretty small change, but at, whatever.
Sit here over some...
I'm not, I didn't get A's in Grand Maria, so...
I didn't know if it was a grammatical thing that I couldn't...
No, not to my knowledge. But anyway, I think the whole concept is that it's a center. It's not, yes, it's a center, it does house, you know? And, you know, every time I think about this whole thing, I'm just going to deviate for a minute because it just amazes me when I reflect back to when I first became involved in 2011, and that Elder and Human Services consisted of two employees, and it was, you know, a very small operation. And today, I can't, it's amazing, the workload and the work that they produce with five employees. So, there's certainly the need there, and it is... produce with five employees, so, there's certainly the need there, and it is a center of activity of many ages, really, so, because it services the whole town.
Did you consider naming it the Wilson Aquatic Center? So, looking on Google real quick, center on is usually the center on a subject, and center at is usually a center at a location.
Oh, there you go.
So, it might be more appropriate to call it the Center at Shattuck Street, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, but there are also like the Center on Main and the Center on, you know, Colfax Street and, so.
Well, I do have a naming right, so.
You do?
To the Aquatic Center.
Only to the Aquatic Center.
Mark, did the, just simply the, the Shattuck Center come about at all, or?
No, I don't think I heard that come up, but, you know, that's certainly possible too.
Takes out the grandma. And we could do it like Ohio State University, say the Shattuck.
You know, I think it is just true, it's, several documents have come out in, in the course of the building destruction and everything, and so, and the Center on Shattuck Street has been how they've been titled, you know, so that I think that was kind of why it came to mind for everybody's thinking, but, so, we would appreciate it if, I don't know how you people wanna proceed, or you wanna wait, or whatever, but that is our recommendation from the Department of Elder and Human Services Director, as well as the Council on Aging Board, so.
Absent some other strong argument, I would just go with what Liz wants.
With both parties?
Yes.
Liz and with COA.
Liz and the COA.
So, if there's no further discussion?
Get out of the way.
See, we're quick, you know, you've got some time to catch up on here, so, but anyway, it's really not, it doesn't require, I think, a lot of discussion, and I know you have to have an open hearing to further discuss naming of things, according to your, the law, which is, we have it in here somewhere, Policy Twenty-Five, Policy on Naming Town Facilities, so, yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Just open.
Yeah, I think, well, I, the way the policy's worded, this is like an introduction, and then we can vote it at our next one.
Okay.
So, consider at, just since we do have a meeting in between, can you take it back to your board?
I'll, no, you mentioned that, so.
That's it, I'm not going to, I won't be a nay vote either, if it's on. Rather near.
Transfer one hundred and fifty thousand to the Special Injury Indemnity Fund.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this really has to go with, because we still have a, at this point, a permanent fire chief, so this is, this covers the salaries for interim positions, with the chief coming in and the existing interim fire chief.
I believe the board voted on this last September, so this would be effective as of July one, twenty twenty-four, so for the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty.
Okay, any discussion?
Where's the money coming from?
So, it's from a special fund, the town meeting had.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, got it, okay.
And we actually, at the town meeting, we put additional money into it as well.
Got it, okay, ready for motion?
Yep.
Move that the Select Board vote per Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section One Eleven F, to transfer one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, effective as of July first, twenty twenty-four, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, for the payment of expenses for providing replacement services for injured firefighters.
Second?
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Karen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, next.
Sorry, guys, just.
Preclassification of position, town administrator, police chief, fire chief?
Yes, if, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board, it's, this is, I believe it's, if you almost wanna classify it as housekeeping, because the, this is to actually move those three positions onto, onto the area of the grid, because to reflect the contracts that.
Negotiated.
Exactly, have negotiated, I believe, a previous chair, you know, has, maybe has more information about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had discussion on this, it's just, putting it where it belongs, so I, I believe that the grade twenty-four, we'll probably see something come out of the, the study that we've paid for, for this year, that'll kinda ratify this a little bit more, but this is getting ahead, this is just simply the, the grade change, but then the process to get the, the numbers add up to these that come next, so this is more, and there's an and there, because it's the three positions, yeah.
But I, I thought we were talking about not having the contract employees on the grid, I thought that's what, where we were headed.
That was me, for sure, but I think for a reference, I think it helps, it helps people know kinda where, where we are, because it's, right now, we're still in the ballpark in those, in those grades, so it makes, we can still do it, I'm willing to do it the other way, absolutely, take our contracts, but it, it does cause a little bit of confusion, having them in the, in the graded system, because, when I say confusion, it also causes a little bit, I'm not gonna say animosity, but I think other employees see these, you know, every three years, these employees get to create, have a new contract, and they can get a lot more benefits and a lot of other things, whereas a regular employee doesn't have that ability, so, I think when we have them on the grade, on the grade structure, and they see, perhaps they go from here on the grade, step whatever, way up to here with another, the next contract, because that's what the market is pressing on us, it's, it's not the best look, and we're, I don't know the history behind the positions being in the grade system, we always have that asterisk, that they're contract employees, and they don't really fall in the, the compensation grid.
But if, but if we're negotiating every three years, then isn't it even more demoralizing to see someone jump sixteen, sixteen steps?
We're gonna chase it, we're gonna chase it forever, yes.
Instead of just saying, well, here's your new salary?
Yeah.
I mean, that's another argument for not having them graded, if they're a contract employee, they're not on the grid, like.
I mean, without Michelle here talking, I know there's, there's the munis system behind this, that, there's a lot of work that goes into creating, putting these individuals on a number that sits within these grids, otherwise they have to create a special, literally a special grade for each individual that's outside the grid, which is three, I mean, it's not an enormous amount of positions, but.
Well, there's more than three contracted employees, though, there's at least five, right? Because of finance, isn't finance, a contract employee in the library director?
No, you're not.
No, not him, is, didn't, I know we had an account.
Alicia was.
Alicia was.
Yeah.
I thought it was by statute that we had to have the town treasurer, town accountant.
You can, but you don't have.
Okay, and I know the library directors.
Yeah, I think we would, we would probably just say that the contract employees aren't on the grid, they very well, and more than likely are always going to fall somewhere in the grid, it's just, it's, it's hard to stick them onto a number that sits there in the grid with the exact COLA, the exact everything, that increases every year with every other employee, because theirs might not, by contract, they could negotiate something that says it's two percent this year, one percent this year, two, three percent that year, so it, it makes it difficult.
Yeah, so that, is that even another reason not to put them on the grid?
Yes, that's my, that's my argument, Matthew.
Nothing you're saying is like arguing for like putting them, I don't understand what.
But I don't wanna be the only one that's.
No, no, but I don't understand what we're doing this.
Or the alternative is you argue to put them on the grid and say, this is how we treat all of our employees, so this is your negotiating stance, right?
Except that they're contract employees, and so the expectation, I think, is not that they get a COLA and a, and a flat two percent like the rest of the employees.
But that's the way the school department and all the other contracts are kinda set up, right?
Well, at the end of three years, does the superintendent get a two percent and go up a grade?
But the school, only the school department is in a union, and they get.
You're talking unionized employees.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, I feel like that's different too, that, I mean, that's a contracted name, but it's essentially aggregating people into a grid, I mean.
You're, yes, you're aggregating into grid based on contract, and every employee that's not aggregated by contract is aggregated by bylaw, basically.
Right, yeah.
You know, we've been, I'm not gonna say lucky, because I know a lot of work goes into this, that our contracts of our different unions, we historically have lined them up pretty close to the same number, same COLA in their contracts, when that necessarily doesn't have to happen on any given year, that could literally change, and all of a sudden, we have a fire contract here, police here, schools here, and then what do we do with town employees, we've got, where are they gonna fall? Normally, they just fall in line with everybody else, so, I think we've, that, that's something we're gonna have to look at in the future, but this particular one, if you guys, right now, we, we have positions that fall within the, the grid, and we know how difficult the market is on some of these positions, what we just went out and got a fire chief and what we were up against, you know, and a town administrator, and looking at the market, I'm just looking three years from now, I think we're gonna be right back where we started, we're like, how do we, do we expand, are we gonna have an invisible grid that puts us out to grade fifteen, like, you know, a step fifteen, like, yeah, to do with the police, the police chief is sitting wrong, right?
I prefer to not have them on the grid at all, and they negotiate, if it takes a little bit of work and munis, I mean, it is what it is.
I mean, we're negotiating, the Select Board is negotiating.
Instead of, instead of negotiating them into a salary that fits into the grid, and it's just, you're negotiating to a number, the negotiation should be pretty clear of the grid.
But it's a good guideline for where we think those positions belong, in our own heads, we, we see the top of the grid.
So, that, I think, is the, that is the first thing you've said, where it's like, okay, yeah, that makes sense, that's a good reason to put them in the grid.
But at the end of the day, it's just a guideline anyway.
Right, I know, so, I mean.
So, and we've been very fiscally responsible while keeping them on the grid.
A counterargument is, our town administrator, police chief, and fire chief all have three year contracts still, so why would we be doing this now?
This, well, taking them out, you mean, sure, that's a fair question, because this will, this does put them where they, they are right now.
But why? But why, why, what's the impetus to doing this now, rather than waiting two and a half years?
Because at town, at town meeting, when we're, when all the town, the residents are looking at the, the book, and it says, it shows them where they are, and they're really not, it's kinda like.
So, wouldn't a better thing just be to vote to take them off the grid, because, altogether, rather than reclassifying from one to another?
Yes, I think that would be better to take them off the grid entirely, like, I understand the rationale for moving them, but I think it's better just not to have them on the grid.
And, and actually, I think if we do this to the police chief, I think it actually says in his contract what grade and step he's going to be paid for the remainder of his contract, so we would have to go back and amend his contract.
Oh, we could put language in there unless otherwise stated.
But the contract's already been signed, we would have to go back and amend the contract.
Right, that's otherwise stated.
And I, and I have talked to the police chief about that, that if something were to happen, and we would potentially have to go back and look at the numbers in that grid, and try to get as close to, as possible to where we were, that's, that's what we're up against, if we try to stay within, in the grid, that's all. Now, the, the good part about the contracts is, if we are having a, a year where we, we're really in a, in a budget crisis, we also have the flexibility now just to, well, you're a one percent this year, you know, you're a one, this first year of your next contract is one percent, or zero, or whatever.
So, I guess I, I mean, like you said, there's no reason to do this now.
Just take no action.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would rather see them come off the grid then, because currently, they, they sit in those old grades, they're sitting in those old grades.
So, if we take them off the grid, do we have to go back to Matt's contract and we, and rewrite it?
I think we just put language in there.
We don't, unless otherwise stated, and. But you don't, because it's just a number that, it's just, it's circumstance, he happens to be sitting on a number on the grid.
So, Ryan, is there?
Actually, I think Matt's contract actually says explicitly, grade and step.
That's right, and I did have, I did work to have those removed from the new, two new contracts, so.
Maybe we could take some time and look at this again, Gary, and figure out.
I'd like to talk to HR a little bit more.
This is your recommendation.
Well, this one, because I, I thought the feel was, we wanted to keep them in the grid, so I sit here, racking my brain how to do that.
That makes sense, yeah.
But I, I believe we could very easily just take them off the grid, and then when we do our, the annual town report, it has the twenty-four grades, and then it just has these three positions at the bottom, these are contract employees, or these five positions are contract employees.
So, I guess one more question, Ryan, is, are there other, besides the entries into munis, would there be other follow-on problems or additional work as a result of taking these three positions off the grid?
Yes, so each, you know, so if you have someone already in the grid, then it's fairly straightforward as to what the next year will look like for those individuals, so for the three, then it would have to be custom, but it's not, you know, tremendous.
But that's set out in the contract, in their contracts.
Right, right, and that would be, right, right, so each year you'd have to, when you establish a new fiscal year.
Oh, okay, you'd have to, okay.
But, but, you know, for three people, it's not, it's not so bad, if you're talking about the entire workplace, it would be more problematic, but, you know, certainly a doable task.
So, we should maybe just wait, and you can talk to HR.
Yeah, I think, you know, Gary, we could maybe talk some more about that and figure out what.
And bring Kim into it, I'd like to talk to the fire.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, we can do that, and then we'll come back.
If you guys stop, Ryan.
Sure, no problem, no problem.
I would include the library director in there too, just because they're a contract employee that's on the grid.
Thank you.
Three F, amend the town compensation grid Schedule B Two for temporary seasonal employees by creating grades five and six.
This is, the DPW director has asked HR to expand the temporary seasonal employee table, because specifically he has one employee that is soon to retire, however, that individual would still like to stay on, on a couple days a week to operate the sweeper, in which, with that kind of extensive experience, there was no one else within the department, and this individual will take this on on a seasonal basis, hence the, what is before you tonight.
Sweeper and the catch basin cleaner?
Just says the sweeper.
Okay.
And I speak a little bit to this at the Personal Advisory Committee meeting, it did become apparent as the members were looking at those positions, that the equipment operator grade six was, was different, it was, it was aged, it didn't, it, it didn't look like the laborer position that we, we had talked about, what a laborer versus a, the equipment operator was, and the grades were exactly the same, and they, they're not, they shouldn't be, because they actually, one of those has, obviously not everybody can drive a street sweeper.
A driver's license.
Or the different licenses that come with that, so, that's, that's where this came about, but that, that's the number one reason why it even came to, in front of the PAC, and Michelle, but from that, we started to look at this, like, where did this, these old grades come from, and how'd they come to be, so, I think we're gonna, we'll see at next town meeting, not November one, probably next spring, a little bit of an expanded table to give the DPW a little more flexibility, because right now, they're crammed into, I think, three grades, when there's actually, with all the new different equipment and technology, that there's actually licenses and requirements that probably could expand on that table a little bit, that's.
I'll have to recuse myself from this item, as I may have a family member working as a temporary slash seasonal employee starting tomorrow, so.
But is he the equipment operator?
Well, but it's, it's the temporary seasonal employee, in order just to avoid any end of it, I'm just gonna recuse myself, so, I will let you, Vice Miss, Vice Chair.
So, I just, I had a couple of questions on, on this in general, one is, it would be good just to see the job descriptions, so that we can just better differentiate what a operator is versus a laborer and things like that, another general question is, we have the rule that says, anyone hired over step three has to come before us, but there's only four steps here, so is the plan that they can hire steps one through three, or is it just, what, I, I, this just one seems different.
Just an old outdated policy again, that we're gonna have to work with, I mean, this is the stuff that, that's something we're gonna have to address, Mark, because, you're right, it wasn't designed for a four-step table, it was, it was designed for a, you know, a ten-step table, so.
Okay.
And I thought, Michelle, I didn't realize she was on leave through today, I thought she'd be here to talk, she could actually talk to the PB side of it, too, the position description.
Yeah, I mean, again, it doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily stop you from establishing this and voting it through, but.
Certainly, I'm the leader, right?
I mean, yeah, that's, I think I was just trying to go to address a staffing.
Yep.
Okay.
Move that the Select Board vote to amend the town's compensation grid Schedule B Two, temporary seasonal employees by creating grades five and six as shown on the proposed Schedule B Two grid, and move that the Select Board vote to establish a new position for a seasonal equipment operator on grade six on the town's compensation grid Schedule B Two, temporary seasonal employees.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Gary, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Four and one are accused.
It's a lot of work on a seasonal employee. Two months.
Okay. Vote to hire Kim as the assessing clerk.
Lot of questions about this one.
I know.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there was an opening, as you know, that the, I think it was April that went to, went to a neighboring community to become the principal assessor there, which Kim had wanted to expand her, her experience within the municipal operations, and Kim wanted to go over to the assessing, to the, as the assessing clerk and the field lister in the assessor's office. And both Kathy and Diane working cooperatively, and everyone is very, very supportive of the move, and, you know, we're looking forward to it.
Are there any questions?
Nope.
I just, my only question is, when a position goes down a grade, is there, I don't know what happens in the handbook. Is anyone familiar with that?
Oh, the handbook, I'm not.
When an employee goes down a grade, I know we were moving them over a step, steps, but I don't know if there's anything, any ramifications in the handbook.
I don't think so, generally, you know...
There's, I know there's when you go up, I didn't know if there was when you went...
Yeah, no.
I can't speak to the town, just the federal side, you don't lose money.
Well, that's why we're showing a higher...
Unless you step out completely, unless you can go down and still, then you try to put them in the line.
Okay.
Motion? Move that the select board vote to hire Kim Creel as the assessing clerk slash field lister at grade nine, step five.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Clay in the room.
Congratulations, Kim, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When do you start?
About two weeks.
Does that open up something else?
Yes, yes, it does.
Do you want to say anything, or?
Thank you all very much for supporting me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for all your work in the clerk's office, and good luck in the assessing office.
So now we're looking for an assistant clerk?
Now we have to break in a new assistant clerk?
Okay, appointments, appoint a resident to the housing authority.
So as I sit on the housing authority, I can speak to this, Ben Hankins is now the only applicant. Ms. Samarco withdrew her application. Ben has been sitting on the board for three years now, I suppose, as a tenant, and, yeah, he's great.
Okay.
That's good enough endorsement for me.
No questions.
Move that the select board vote to appoint Benjamin T. Hankins Jr. as a member of the housing authority for a term of three years, expiring June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public input. Let's start with select board updates. You wanna go first, Gary?
Yeah, I didn't have much, just the Memorial Day Parade, obviously, just the, we had actually perfect weather for marching in a parade, probably not the best for watching on the side, but it was a great event, a lot of work went into it. I know a lot of departments participated. Great community event, and, once again, every year, it just goes off without a hitch, and it was, it was a great, well-attended, and it was an honor to march in the event. So, thank you, Littleton.
Just sorry that I wasn't able to be there, it was at a family wedding, but just couldn't see the posts on Facebook and whatnot, and thank you for, legislators for showing up as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Matthew?
Nothing for me today.
Orchard group?
What's that?
I think from the Orchard Group.
Um, no, I think, I mean, we are planning on a joint meeting on Thursday with the Orchard Group. I think we can cover pretty much everything then.
Yeah, I guess it's just fair to say that, so that the public knows we're...
We also have it later in the agenda.
We have it later in the agenda.
You want to talk about that then, too?
Karen?
Ditto everybody else on the Memorial Day Parade. It was a pleasure to march in, even if it wasn't a pleasure to watch necessarily, weather-wise, but, yeah, it went off really well, thanks to everyone who's involved. Office hours were on Friday, that was mostly focused on Clean Lakes, so thanks to everyone who showed up for that, and that's about it.
I, so, I was also in the parade, and I wanted to thank everyone for showing up. I would like to encourage more veterans to come and either march or ride in the parade in years, future years. I attended a Mass Housing and Economic Forum with Kim Driscoll online a few weeks ago. They're talking more about housing grants and the MBTA communities moving on. I wanted to congratulate all the middle schoolers who were in the Lucky Hudson play. I, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I heard there were 52 participants, and the play went off without a hitch, so congratulations. Last week, I attended a presentation in this room from the Sudbury Valley Trustees. They are developing a, an online mapping system, and right now, it's got four separate data viewers, they call them, where you can look at, you can look at Littleton properties, and, and it helps you kind of assess which ones should be preserved for farmland or habitat. I forget what all four categories are, but, so it's a good way of starting to use, developing a rubric for how to evaluate properties. And there were some questions and comments there about how other communities were using it, and the act and planning board is actually starting to use it for how they're doing their open space development, so that they can figure out where in a parcel, if they're doing an open space development, the open space should be. So there's a lot of potentials for this, and stay tuned, so. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, remember this is the select board, just a few, few things. The Poxon Rec, as I have distributed the text pictures today, they started the permanent walkway, should be done in a week. They've also started the lifeguard, lifeguard training, and at this point right now, weekends, the beaches are open. From the IT, I want to make an announcement that we have been informed that, from a community compact grant of $250,000, that was a team effort by LALWD, and submitted what, on the town side, so it's gonna be fiber optic, you know, throughout the town. One thing, a couple of things that we'll be able to get with this is the 36 King Street will be included in the upgrades that need to go there for that project. And also, I believe there was, there was, there was a part of the application was included, bringing fiber optic two to the cemetery, two over there. But congratulations on Nancy and Dave from LALWD, they did a great job submitting. And the, I signed the contract, I got notified, signed the contract, sent it to them, and they sent it back to me within 20 minutes, signed by there, so I distributed amongst the accountants, the CFO, and the Robin in the, in the finance office. We also, one of the, one of the concerns that was brought up last week with our newsletter, speaking of the newsletter, which will be released on Friday, and is the, will be the hearing, the hearing, the seeing impaired, the vision impaired, being able to, with PDF. Nancy has been working with Eric Manzer for the newsletter, he's a member of the ADA Committee, and he is, he is of the opinion that as presented as it is being presented, it is, it is fine. It is, it is, it is good job, it's unacceptable. Everyone through the department heads have been, are gonna, have been included in news and announcements, so everyone, all the department heads, and got emails today to say, you know, with everyone is being signed up, for them, everyone to be informed. On the accounting side, we have financial analyst interviews occurring, we're looking to hopefully have someone start in that position relatively soon. And the memo, as I believe I informed all the select board members last week, the year end updates for the department heads have been, memo has been distributed. Police Department, there's one individual in the academy, and that, that person will start on July 1st. DPW, one of the, another part of the update last Friday was the Foster Street bid, that came in very favorably, and looking, that, it looks like that that will be, you'll start seeing activity in there in September, this fall, for that project, for the redoing the entire, start redoing the entire street, sidewalks, everything, they're rebuilding the street. They continue with the sweeping and the mowing, and I had reached out to the, to Steve last week, I believe it was last Thursday, just saying what a great job that the team did with, with the common, they did, they did a fantastic job, they looked, it looked beautiful. The senior center, in about a month, there'll be a beam signing contest, not contest, event. Sorry.
Who cares?
Gary's really good at beam signing. It's gonna be competitive.
And, I mean, it's actually, it's actually a fun event to come there, when, in Gloucester, we had a, I hate to use the, it's not a windmill, it's a...
Turbine?
Thank you, thank you, a turbine. We had a blade signing thing there, too, I know, funny. We had blade signing, it was a great, it was a great community event.
Put your tulips around the windmill.
Yeah.
I mean, we did that for this building.
Yeah, yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay. As everyone just spoke about, the Memorial Day Parade was a, was a great event. Fire Department, there are two, we've got two people in the academy, and there were three openings coming in, as a result of town meeting support, there are three positions, and there are, so far, there are two good candidates that are going through the interview process. And that is it. Thank you.
Mark, I could, I just want everybody to know I'm on, I'll be out of state the 5th through the 12th of June, so I may not be, I believe our meeting falls probably on the 10th.
Yes.
Yeah, I won't be in attendance at that meeting.
Thank you.
And don't forget our carnival, the 20th, to the...
Thursday through Sunday?
Thursday through Sunday, 20th through the 23rd.
Public input?
Rob Brown's, 25 Juniper Road. Spoke with many of you at your office hours, I appreciate the time that you're providing to residents, I appreciate CLC being here today and you hearing them out, and the lively discussion that there was. I think that there's a lot of nuanced issues. I think that sometimes it can be challenging to present them properly. I wanna, I direct this to you. Matthew made a comment with regard to eco-harvesting, if there was more funding available, could it be used? While I agree that the committee is assessing and kind of testing, going from a one-year review to a two-year review experience of it, so somewhat still in the unknown category is the explore for creative solutions, but without question, there are many, many more areas of the lakes that if we had equipment, if we had the tools, if CLC committee and others determined that was the right stuff, then the lakes need attention. That's the big headline, and I just was concerned with regard to the interaction that, that I felt I heard, that I, I view it as funding is a significant problem. I will tell you that I'm not a member of Clean Lakes Committee, I'm somewhat intentional about that, but I have been advocating, and I will say that I have fought quite hard with regard to that five-year budget, because what I found was the membership of ex officio members and real members almost self-denied themselves. Why should we put this in? Because it's not gonna get funded. No. You better put everything in that you need, and I worked with others, and I think that a number of the members got motivated with regard, yeah, we ought to put it in, even if it's not gonna get funded. I hope CPC funding, again, focusing your attention to you, I hope that CPC funding can be there. Dave Barr mentioned Westford's experience. I will tell you, earlier today, I briefly talked with Amy Green about this, mentioned CPC funding. She almost immediately dismissed ongoing CPC funding being available, saying that many communities don't allow CPC funding. Just because that exists in other communities in Westford does not mean it can't work here. I hope it can. But I will tell you, as a resident, it scares me. I was scared going into CPC funding season, knowing how late it was, that, you know, what happens if this is denied? If you don't do stuff, nature's not taking, you know, any time off, so it gets bad. DPW was mentioned briefly, I think Karen, you know, spoke of, you know, it's not just for pilots. I've read the last three years' worth of minutes of the CLC. It, it really got under my skin where I read that, you know, the water department representative on CLC presented that a contract was engaged in '22 with regard to, it wasn't will, it was definitive. Are the minutes wrong? I doubt it, but maybe they are. But it was that engagement had been completed to assess the Wetland Park, sometimes known as Frog Pond, with regard to getting it dredged. Okay, not done in '22, not done in '23, not done in '24, not, you know, I don't think it's gonna be done in '25, up for maybe funding in '26. Again, I don't know the answers to this, but I can tell you this, as a new resident of two to three years now, the Wetland Park has, has not been maintained. The town hasn't done what needs to be done since the Section 319 grant enabled it to handle 22% of the stormwater drainage into Long Lake. So that's another aspect with regard to DPW staffing, that I think I've spoken with you guys in NINCOM before, with regard to need be asking, what do they need to get their job done? Because I find Steve Yonle to have just an impossible set of tasks, giving the staffing, he can't seem to hire enough people to get it done. The last one, for you, and I thank you for your time, is that the water department, I agree 100% with what you said, try to get a five-year perspective of what they're funding, I think they went above and beyond. Ivan was, was very clear, don't expect us to do this in future years, we're giving you an extra 50, 60, you know, to try to, you know, tide you over, you know, that sort of thing. But here's another nuanced layer of that, with regard to Manawanke, it was conditioned with regard to the 50/50 share coming from Westford. Dave Barr again gave you a status with regard to their, you know, line item and their lack of CPC funds going forward, once that 100K, and it'll get used up, you know, instantly. So, all of this to say, very concerned as a resident, feel that because it's been spectacle cell tower funded in the past, I'm not certain that our community is knowledgeable. And when I look at the orchard, when I look at the other aspects, big votes that come in, sometimes I think the public just doesn't really understand and doesn't get it, and we're not prepared as a public to, to make the, what I think are the smart choices for Littleton long-term. I'm concerned that the lakes are another one of those, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, again, I'm Dave Barr. I live at 49 Manawanke Trail. I'm, excuse me, a member of the Clean Lakes Committee, member of the Westford Health, Lakes and Ponds Collaborative, which is a sister organization for that. I'm the president of the Friends of Forge Pond, which is a general group that works to maintain the ecology of Lake Manawanke, Forge Pond. And the only thing I really wanted to say was that, historically, Forge Pond, Lake Manawanke has maintained its, tried to control its aquatic invasives with drawdowns, winter drawdowns, to try to kill the plant, the invasive plants around the edge of the lake where the water, where the lake bed is exposed. And that has worked fairly well for the last 10 years, moderately, depending on the year. Last year, we were very surprised, this time of year, we were getting a lot of heavy plant growth in the lake, and it was like, people that lived on the lake all their life said we'd never seen it like this before. This is more aquatic plants than, than we've ever seen. And the hope was, maybe that's a, there were some plausible reasons for it, in terms of the weather and climate and things like that, drought and warm winter and such. The hope was, maybe that was a one... The hope was, maybe that was a one-off and it wasn't a new, new normal. I just want to say that this year already, we're seeing the same thing in the lake, tremendous amount of invasive growth, and it looks like maybe it isn't just a one-off, maybe it's something that is, something we're gonna have to be dealing with more going forward, and it's something that I think is worth trying to, to deal with as a community rather than just a group. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Tess Deegan, Birch Road, I am the newly elected president of the Long Lake Neighborhood Association, and I'm speaking here as the president of the Neighborhood Association. Last year, for the annual meeting, we invited Mr. Yanley to speak to us, I was not yet president, and voiced some concerns around traffic increase and speed around the neighborhood, and Mr. Yanley said that he would look into it, we suggested stop signs or other traffic mitigating things. I recently reached out to him again, because there had been really no movement, one of our members had contact with him throughout the year, but I asked him again and I received an email back that the stop signage that we were looking for right on top of the hill, the tree streets, are very steep and intersect with Emerson Drive, one of the streets, mine, Birch Road, has a stop sign, none of the others do, so we thought this would be a great way to mitigate some of that risk in traffic, because you have to speed up the hill. He said, none of the areas that we suggested meet criteria for stop signs. There's also two curves around Lake Shore Drive that are not very visible to, to be able to come around, the speed is pretty high, and as you know, since COVID, we've had much more delivery traffic, and he said that there would be some other idea on how to, how to mitigate those problems. I'm here to tell you that the neighborhood and the neighbors, the Long Lake Neighborhood Association are the neighbors who live in the watershed to Long Lake, the neighbors are very concerned, there have been many close calls and many uncomfortable situations, we are still hopeful that the DPW will consider, but really, we would also like to know what those criteria are, and really be clear on that, so maybe there are some things that can be done. I also wanted to piggyback on Mr. Rounce's comment on the Frog Pond and Wetland Park, I did mention in my email to Mr. Yanley that we are still waiting for, for the dredging of Basin One, and he did mention that there were some ideas on getting a contractor and funding for this fall, or in, in the process for this fall, and the Long Lake Neighborhood Association, this project is also very dear to our heart, we walk around that path, which is highly dangerous right now, it's very deteriorated, all the time, so we would really like to have that done also. Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you.
No one else? Host community agreements?
You can be, you can be the new Matthew.
You can sit there if you want to sit.
Thanks for meeting with me, I just wanted to clarify, is it just host community agreements tonight, or is it social equity as well?
Well, it just listed as HCAs, where social equity is tied into it.
Okay.
So, I'm sure you could talk about.
Okay. All right, so when I last met with this board, the model host community agreement had just been released by the Cannabis Control Commission, so this board directed me to speak with our active host community agreement holders and renegotiate those agreements based on the model, making tweaks as applicable to the termination provision. So I worked with G7, MRM, Sanctuary, and Community Care Collectives, and we have draft agreements that were circulated to this body, the agreements for the most part do follow the model, they diverge in a couple areas, most notably, we included what I call like a blended, a blended community impact fee provision, so for example, in Sanctuary, it's going to be really difficult to discern whether the impact is coming from adult-use marijuana or medical marijuana, so we wanted some assurances that the, that Sanctuary wouldn't say, you know, we're not paying that, because at the time, even the odor wasn't actually adult-use marijuana, we were growing medical marijuana, we wouldn't really know, it's just odor to us, so we agreed on some language that says, you know, no matter what they're growing, whether it's adult or medical, they're gonna accept the CIF if applied. And then in terms of termination provisions, I made them much stronger to give this board more authority to terminate the host community agreement. So we have some samples, I've reserved your right to make edits, they all know, they have also reserved their rights, so I think in terms of process, I'm happy to answer any questions, we can make tweaks, but what I would say is if you, I would, if you're comfortable with the agreements, I wouldn't vote tonight, I would just give me that nod, I'll go back to their council, I'll get them to agree firmly, and then you guys can vote at your next meeting.
Okay, did anyone have any comments on the agreements?
I appreciate the fact you, you followed pretty closely with the, with the model agreements, which I think lines up better for us and protects us frankly, so I appreciate that, and I think that the edits that you made are in line with our wishes, and appreciate it, and a lot of time and effort put into it, definitely appreciate that.
There are two things that I probably should point out, in Sanctuaries, we added an odor provision, so you have Sanctuary, as you know, it's cultivator, Community Care Collective also has the authority to cultivate, currently, they have a license for retail, they filed and have a provisional license for product manufacturing, but they have not filed, as of two weeks ago, any license with the commission for cultivation. If you want, we can seek to include an odor provision in Community Care Collective's agreement, I'm just not sure whether they're actually going to move in that direction.
Couldn't we condition it, that if they, if they did choose to.
Absolutely.
Seek to cultivate?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I, after looking through the, you know, the HCAs and outside of an odor provision, is there any other reason for Littleton to have HCAs? The, in your opinion, I should say.
So, I'm gonna answer that from a legal perspective, what the HCA provides you that you wouldn't have just under zoning is the ability to potentially collect community impact fees. The likelihood of any community actually collecting those impact fees, in my opinion, is fairly small, and we have yet to see how that's going to develop with the commission, they haven't given us more guidance on what enhanced need really means, we talked about that last time. So if you decide to waive a host community agreement, you lose that ability. Based on the model, it just gives you more oversight than you would, so if there's a change in management, you would have the ability to have them come in and, and review it. The commission's regulations now enable establishments that are denied host community agreements to seek relief from the commission, so it's unknown at this time, if you did decide not to issue a host community agreement because of change of manage, management, and you don't believe the new team is, should have a license, whether that would be upheld in the eyes of the commission, or they would just issue a waiver, so we don't know that yet.
So, I'm just asking you guys, where, where do you sit on the thought process of Littleton? Looking at Littleton's impact of any of our cannabis facilities, which to me have been negligible since they took away our ability to get revenue outside of the standard 3% that we tax, which was, I believe, the reason why really, they really pushed the HCAs, because we had this whole impact fee that we, we could collect.
And beyond, we had side letters as well.
Yeah, so outside of, I mean, we have, we have zoning, we have the voters, and we have obviously the planning boards, I'm trying to figure out, we put, if we put the odor part, that's just into the cultivation side anyway, where, it's just like a statement, it's, it's, when I looked at the, the reading.
There's no teeth.
There's, there's no teeth in it, we can't, it's still gonna become a Board of Health, is it, is it a Board of Health issue, is it, is it something that's causing people, it's, it would always end up to there, whether it's in the host community agreement or not, I'm just trying to find out, all of this work, everything we put into these HCAs, and I, I saw when the town vote happened a few boards ago, why they were important, made sense to me, but I'm, I'm really struggling now to, it just seems more like a bureaucratic thing, like more paperwork that we're dragging businesses through, dragging everyone.
We have to stay compliant.
Every three years, and the compliance piece to this, I'm just trying to find the value in continuing with HCAs in Littleton, I, I'm looking for help, because I, I just, I'm not seeing it as I look through these, I, it just, nothing came out at me and said, what are we doing, to me, it was like, what are we doing right now? What is, what's the reason for these, we, we have a compliance through zoning, we have compliance through the Board of Health, obviously, and we have planning.
I don't see us going for any impact fees, I don't see any of these businesses creating the need for us to impose an impact fee.
Have you seen one somewhere, like, one that's actually, where a town has gone after, give me, give an example of, like, where is, where's a town that's gone after?
City of Salem, right?
So, it's just starting May 1st of this year, so it's all new, so we don't really know, so the way that it's gonna have to work is, at the annual renewal, you file for the prior year, and then they go through the commission, and the commission needs to certify that as a valid impact fee, so we just don't have the information yet as to whether or not those.
Well, that's the new one, what about, we've had them since day one.
People have had, no, 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 many communities, Littleton included, have collected impact fees, you know, we talked about the Uxbridge case, whether those fees were ever defensible is, is another.
There's lawsuits right now against towns for that.
Right, and, but there's also lawsuits against establishments arguing that the prior host community agreements are still valid, so we don't know, the courts are going to deal with it. I think the other consideration for this board is, if you do agree to waive your host community fee requirement, you lose any ability to make a decision in this, right? It becomes a race to the finish line, almost, whoever gets the next special permit from the planning board. What you did before, when you had three licenses available, you said, okay, we know we have three special, sorry, not licenses, we know we have three special permits available, they need a host community agreement, let's do an RFP, see who we think is the most qualified, and then give the, the HCAs to those applicants. You wouldn't have that ability anymore, now whether or not you want that is a policy decision, not a legal decision, but just want to make clear to you that that's what happens if you decide to waive. You also can waive for particular, the, the regulations say you can waive for one establishment and not another, to me, I am concerned about the arbitrary and complicitous nature of that, but there could be defensible situations, you know, if you have a social equity applicant that you could see waiving for that applicant, but maybe not another, but we would need to be really careful as we move, move forward.
So you couldn't have HCAs for certain establishments based on, we're using ones where, all right, if we're trying to create a, one on smell, that's literally only cultivation, that's nothing to do with retail or anything else.
And so that could be, that's a, in my mind, that would be a defensible reason that you really want to have more of a say in the cultivation part because of the potential impacts on the neighborhood, so you, you're comfortable with retail, you don't feel like retail needs an HCA, so you'll waive for retail, but maybe for cultivation and product manufacturing, you'll require HCAs. These are all policy decisions for this board.
I think just, the, the statement you made about basically vetting any candidates, having an RFP, it gives this board some authority to choosing who we think would be the best operator, frankly, and we do have the potential to issue another retail license, and if we just say we're not gonna do HCAs any longer, essentially, to your point, they just need to get a special permit and operate as if they were, you know, operating any other type of business in town.
Well, talk to me about that, do you guys know how that works, like the special permit? Is there a vetting process at all with a special permit?
Not based on the applicant's qualities, so as long as they meet the setback and have the required planning documents, that's fine, but there isn't, you know, is this applicant better than this applicant, is this location better than this location, they have to look more within their, their confines of the.
What's been brought to them.
So, I agree that the HCAs don't have that much teeth, but it, but it seems like if we don't have the HCAs, we're giving up any authority that this board would have, right? And even if we don't have authority, and if we just say we can cancel an HCA, it sends a message, right, that we wouldn't have the ability to do if we didn't have the HCAs.
You're talking about the initial vetting process.
No, I'm saying if we.
To have it in place.
If we had an HCA in place and then we didn't like that establishment for some reason, whatever.
Or they changed ownership.
They changed ownership or something happened, we could cancel that HCA, and it might have no impact on the, on the process in the long run, but it helps send a message to the other boards and everyone else that like, there's something, there's something off here, right? That we would, otherwise, we're like relinquishing our authority and just making it someone else's problem, right, it's now just the Board of Health and the Planning Board or whoever else is involved, and we're, we just sit back and say, sorry, we're not involved, so.
That's a fair, I can.
I mean, I think to the extent that we can have a say in, in making sure that businesses reflect our community's values, we should, we should exercise that say, and so, to me, it makes sense to, to continue with the HCA model.
And I agree that say is very small, it's not, it's not a huge impact that we have, right?
Besides, I mean, besides the gatekeeping piece, I, I just, if we can sit here and stomp our feet all day at somebody, you know, and we'll, we'll use, you know, if we're talking about odor, there's no, okay, we're just sitting here, we're upset, but, so, that's why I don't, that's when I would sit there looking at it, and that, through the HCAs, outside the vetting, which, I mean, that's almost a selling point to me, if you're looking at it that way, not that we have a ton of these that are coming into town, but literally such a small amount.
But Eva's point about management change, you know, anytime, I mean, Anthony's called fired, how many, how many different?
Yeah, that's, that's true. All right, I got off my ledge, I'm, I'm back on your team on this.
I'm sorry.
Can he be in the room? It's just public, okay. Yeah, I, I guess I'm leaning towards, yes, follow the model with the edits that you put in there, and the letter that you sent about the mutual release, I think is.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right, I think we'll strike it for Community Care Collective, because we never collected fees, so, but other than that, I think it makes sense.
Another, another social, are we gonna speak to social justice?
Yeah, and so then the next part is social equity.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
It's different media.
All right, so, the way I like to look at this is that there are two camps, there's presumptive compliance and then other statutory requirements, so you need to meet the minimum acceptable standards that the Cannabis Control Commission has for integrating individuals that have been disproportionately harmed by the war, war on drugs into the regulated market. They haven't actually told. They haven't actually told us what those minimum acceptable standards are. They just said, if you do one of these three things, you will meet them. So those three things are, you can adopt a bylaw to exclusively permit social equity businesses for three years or until the exclusivity period has been met. So you have one special permit. If you wanted to check that box in the fall, you could adopt a bylaw that would hold that for three years. You could adopt the model bylaw that they just issued a couple days ago, which tracks the regulations but leaves a lot of questions. We don't really know what a lot of this actually means yet. Or you could adopt a local approval process that is administered on a one-to-one basis. So these are presumptive compliance steps that you can take, and if you take them, you know, you're in compliance. What's unclear is, well, what if you don't want to take one of those three steps? It seems like there's something you can do, but we don't know what that thing is yet. So I'm not saying you have to take one of those three steps right now, but we do need to kind of think about, do we want to adopt the model bylaw? Do we want to have an exclusivity period? Or do we want to try something different and try to meet our presumptive compliance requirement? And then there's the other requirements. There's a transparency obligation. We need to have a website that has all this information about access and how you follow the process. We need to develop an equity plan. You need to come up with an HCA grading matrix. So basically, how are you going to weight these HCAs? How are you going to rank them? And 25% of that score, it needs to be numeric, needs to be for social equity. And then you need to come up with a positive improvement plan. No one knows what that means. So that one, we, you know, we'll update you when we get more guidance, but we don't know what that means. So the plan really needs to help residents that are economic empowerment applicants, live in disproportionately impacted areas. I mean, we don't, I don't know what that means. So the commission has been asked numerous times for guidance on that, and we're hopeful that they'll issue something. But in the meantime, we really do need to get moving on at least the transparency obligations, getting that municipal website up and running, developing an equity plan, and then coming up with a grading matrix. So I've been helping communities do this a lot. Some communities do it in open session, and other communities designate one person, they just work with them, come up with a draft, and then bring it back to the board. So I really defer to you. I do think it takes a long time to negotiate and work with these in open session, but happy to do it if that's the way you guys want to go.
Karen and I would designate it as the HGA folks.
POCs.
So, but if we're, if there's two of us, then I assume we have to.
Yeah. So maybe what I'll do is I'll come up with a draft, and I'll share it with this board, and if I feel like I need to ask questions, I can check in with people, provided it's not a quorum.
Sure.
So we're doing this for the one permit that we have outstanding? That's correct?
No. So it's, so it's for your community. So remember, you can issue, you have one retail left, right? But you could have another cultivator come in, you could have another product manufacturer come in, you could have another independent tester come in. So it's for all of those.
So until we have, so if we're required to have this in place, and we have a limited number of these that we can potentially issue, are we basically required to hold off on issuing more of them until we have the policy in place? Because otherwise, we could have issued them all before the policy's in place.
So to my knowledge, we don't have anyone asking for HCAs right now.
We do.
Oh, we do.
We've got a couple of applicants.
Okay. So I don't, I mean, I don't have an answer to that. We were supposed to do this by May 1st. No one's done it. Communities are doing it now. If you don't accomplish it by May 1st of 2025, that's when the commission can start fining you. So not doing it now, we don't really know what that means. So what I would do is, I would work as quickly as you can. If you get applicants, we can deal with it individually at that time, as best we can, trying to recognize social equity as a component that the commission really wants to see put front and center, and try to just do the best we can. But we should move forward. We should get the website, at least the website up and running, and come up with an equity plan.
Unfunded mandate. Awesome.
And what, and what do we do with these ones that are coming in front of us?
Yeah.
I mean, you kind of stirred it up a little bit.
Yeah. So we have, we have people coming in right now.
We've got a couple of applications or letters of interest.
Letters of inquiry. So maybe what we can do is, I guess I defer to the board, but, you know, within the next month, we could probably get this stuff done, like an equity plan and the matrix done, so that we can see those applications. There's no timeline for you to act on an HCA. There's no obligation.
But what if you get one? Say we have one.
And it meets all criteria.
Or it doesn't. We just sit here and wait for another one to come in so we can compare them against another. That's what I'm trying to get around.
Right. So if you're, so the, some communities will look at ones as they come in, and if they, this is the intent the commission is envisioning. And if you get over 60 on your score out of 100, you automatically get an HCA. So if you're under 60, you don't, and if you're over 60, you do. Other communities are doing more what you did before, where say, okay, we know we have a lot of interest, we're going to accept applications from this date to this date, and then whoever we get, we're going to move forward at that time. Others are trying to avoid the matrix by saying, we're going to give anyone an HCA. We just talked about the downside of doing all that, but that is something other people are doing. So I think with people sending letters of interest, I would say, let's commit within the next month to get a matrix and a social equity policy and the website up and running, and then they can submit their applications. If you want to do like a, well, we're going to review on this date, any applications we receive prior to then are going to be reserved, reviewed on that date, that's up to this board, or if you want to do it on a rolling basis, it's a policy decision.
I think that's kind of what we had, we anticipated just having a rolling basis, and we really didn't have any interest for a while. And just recently, we've had some folks that have.
Are they all retail that you're seeing, or are you seeing?
It's for the retail license.
Just the retail.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
I, I kind of, I'm not sure I entirely agree that we should do it on just a rolling basis. We probably should say.
That's how it been, expecting it, and it really hasn't come to.
Right. But now that we have something, maybe, and we, knowing this policy's coming in place, maybe we say that, you know, let's say the social equity is in place, you know, July 1st, right, then we say, you know, we'll look at applications effective August 15th or something, right? To give enough time so that people know that these things are coming, and it's just not the first one in the door is going to beat everyone else.
There's, the intention of the state is, social equity is to give people that, I can almost guarantee you, the three applications that we have right now will not score highly. I don't know exactly what the parameters are to be with the scoring.
It's up to the board.
I know it's up to us, but if we have three people that seek an HCA, you know, three entities, and we really feel as though Entity B would be a great fit for Littleton, and we like their plan, and their security, and everything that they present to us, I don't want this to preclude us from moving forward with Entity B.
Which might never come to fruition. We might not ever get an applicant like that that falls under the.
That falls under.
That might fall under the 25%, I guess. You're saying that if there's none, if there's no applications that have, that meet the, get the 25% score for social, I mean, everyone.
That's okay. So you don't need to have a social, you're not required to have a social equity applicant. Yeah, it's just that your policy needs to recognize that these individuals have been harmed.
Score appropriate.
Yeah, and so the score's reserved. Yeah. And, and remember, the board can issue more HCAs than special permits. So you already have Littleton Apothecary, right? That's out there. So like, there's nothing that's precluding you if you get five applications and you think two of them are really good. You could issue two HCAs, and then it's just whoever gets through the permitting process quicker.
When you're scoring these, is there, I assume it's something like a 0 to 100 scoring? Are you required to take the highest score, or just something in ranges, or what's the?
The regulations don't speak to that, so I think it's up.
Yet.
Yes. And the commission is supposed to issue a model grading matrix, which they haven't done yet. But I think that, the, I think it, if you, if you have one that's 99 and one that's 98, and you choose the 98 over the 99, I think that's more defensible if challenged than if you choose the 70 versus the 90. So I think that there could be factors, if they're really close, that push you one way or the other, but the bigger that gap, I think, the harder it will be to defend.
Or you push them both forward.
Or you push them both forward. Yeah. Right. So I think, you know, unfortunately, a lot of the answers are, we just don't.
Yeah, I know.
But that's where we are. All right.
Awesome.
So just want to summarize, we're good with the HCAs. I'll reach out to the operators and get them.
That's a lot of work. Like you said, I know. It's a tough read.
Have you contacted anyone from the Harvest Club?
No. So I didn't contact the Harvest Club or Littleton Apothecary. Littleton Apothecary's provisional license was issued in October 8th of 2020. They haven't done anything since then that I could find. The Harvest Club's last entry was also, or February 11th of 2021. So based on conversations, I think maybe with you, Chuck, you had said that they were not moving forward, but.
Right. I think they sent an email.
I think so, yeah.
Just so we had something from them that said, we're not going.
But also, at any time if that changes, they can obviously come back to the board. You know, if they try to file HCAs that are non-compliant, because we're seeing this happen now, what happens is you get a letter from the commission that says, these are the eight provisions, and go fix it with the town. And so it's not like the town automatically gets fined or in trouble. There's like the opportunity to work with the applicant. Yeah.
They went a different way.
Yeah. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Avery, thank you very much.
So review, discuss, and assign select for liaisons to town boards and committees. So we have the list of things that everyone signed up for last year, and I just wanted to review and make sure everyone was comfortable with what they were assigned to, and wanted to continue on, or wanted to change, if anyone wanted to change what they were responsible for.
All these are still viable, I hope?
Well, I think some of these that, like, I'm looking at some of the ones that I'm on, like, I think Open Space and Rec Plan Implementation Committee, I think that's pretty much done. And I'm also on the EHS Vision Subcommittee, which I think is no longer viable.
Chuck, you're also on the taxation committee.
Oh, yeah.
So that should be two of us on that. Those two members on that.
Oh, that's the other one. There's the Committee for Explorers.
Oh, okay, never mind. What is the taxation going here?
That one.
I see.
There's the liaisons, and then there's the voting members, too.
Are you still, are you okay with taking the Orchard?
So, yeah, so you want to talk to that?
Yeah. So what I told the Orchard Working Group was that, you know, based on the vote, we're not working on RFPs much, which is sort of the value add that I brought to the group. So I'd like to focus more on HCAs and some other things where I think my, you know, makes, is a better fit for the work of the group.
So I said I would do that, but Gary, you mentioned you might be interested, too, so one of us. I think we should make the working group always just post as joint select board meetings, so, because I think I'm going to try and show up even if I'm not on the liaison, so.
It's up to you. I mean, you could be on the committee. I plan on, now that we're going to be posting with them, I do, it's just too important. We, you know, we have to be, we're going to have to be really involved in this for the foreseeable future until this is, if we get this right. So.
So Mark, are you replacing Karen as the vote?
I guess, yeah.
We are joined Thursday.
And we are joined on Thursday at 7:00.
How often is the group at meetings?
Every other week. But if we're not going for an RFP, you know, I think we're going to be discussing the future and the mission of that group, like.
That's why the select board, I think, we need, we need to have that vision.
Agreed. It might be much less frequent. I mean, you know, let's, we'll talk about that on Thursday.
We should take the Town Administrator Search Committee off the list, probably.
Well, I don't know. Jim?
Unless, you know, Jim, you want to.
You want to speak to that?
Not me.
7:00 PM.
I don't think the agricultural working group is on those back pages, actually. I don't think that exists either.
No, it does not.
What's that?
The ag working group on the back.
Yep. Both of those are, okay.
That has not met for years and years.
Okay. Can delete that? Okay.
Okay, so I, I'm okay with those changing, taking over that. I have not been very good at keeping up with the Board of Health, but I will try to do a better job.
Dan's pretty open and involved.
What night do they meet?
Wednesdays. They're the same as the PNC meetings.
And the working group.
And the working group.
And the Orchard group, right.
So I'll just follow up and tell them if they need someone to reach out.
And PTA, in case anybody's interested.
Okay. Okay.
Littleton MPTA Communal Advisory Committee, has that done anything? I used to sit on that with Keith, when Keith was here.
That street's going in. There it is.
Well, it was, I still get emails from, from different people.
I do, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I've attended a couple of those meetings just for.
Yeah. Everything was on Zoom for a while there, yeah.
So just leave that kind of.
I don't know if the committee exists.
That one doesn't have, that one doesn't have, I mean, that's a list of boards with no representation. Like, the Housing Authority shouldn't be on that list because everyone's elected on the Housing Authority.
Looks good. Succeed.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on. I'm sorry, just so we could just make a motion. Show updated, yeah.
Are we ready for the motion?
Yep.
Move that the select board vote to reassign their committee liaisons and representatives per the discussion at the May 28th Select Board Meeting.
Say it.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Authorize the Town Administrator to execute Amendment 1 for 36 King Street with LLB for $80,000.
Mr. Chair, will you just take the next three really as a grouping, if you think of it that way? So we, Town Meeting voted to move forward with the renovations of 36 King Street. The next three contracts are merely an execution of the agreements that we need to make that happen. So the first agreement is with LLB Architects to basically serve as our construction administrator for the duration of the project. Our OPM would be continuing on with Vertex, that's Item D. And Item E is the contract with Classic Construction. We went out to bid, we had two bidders. Classic was our low bid. We already met with them on site, but we're just waiting for the vote tonight to execute that contract with them and finalize that piece. So these are all basically just follow-up pieces from what Town Meeting allowed us to do, and all within the budget per. and, um, all within the budget per, because we came to town meeting with bids in hand. So, um, all fairly straightforward, but, uh, does require the formal approval of board to move forward accordingly.
Okay. Can I just read them as one motion with an and in between?
Um, if, yeah, we can, we can just go through each one if you'd like, if, yeah, if you'd like.
Move that the select board vote to authorize Town Administrator, uh, Town Administrator James Duggan to execute Amendment Number One of the Designer Services Construction Administration Contract for the thirty-six King Street renovation project with L L B Architects for eighty thousand four hundred dollars. And move that the select board vote to authorize Town Administrator James Duggan to execute Amendment Number One of the Owners Project Services Contract for the thirty-six King Street renovation project with the Vertex Companies, Inc. for one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. And move that the select board vote to authorize Town Administrator James Duggan to execute a contract with Classic Construction for the rehabilitation of thirty-six King Street for two million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, second by Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, that was quick. So contract for Studio G for Designer Services for Shaker Lane, M S B, M S B A.
Right. Just, if I could, uh, Mr. Chair, just, uh, this is a, um, so we, uh, the town received two bids for Designer Services. And, uh, per the request of the Shaker Lane, um, School Building Subcommittee technically, uh, that asked, uh, that we asked M S B A if we, if we could, uh, participate in the interviews, uh, the Subcommittee members participating in the interviews. And then ultimately, I think by one vote, uh, we went with, um, uh, went with Studio G as our, uh, with the proposal brought before us. So once that agree, once we agreed to move forward with them, then we had to negotiate a contract with Studio G. And, um, what you have in your packet, uh, there's a lot of back and forth with Studio G, uh, on that. But, uh, we were able to reach an agreement with them, uh, for price, and that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, uh, the request is to basically, uh, authorize the Town Administrator to move forward at, uh, with, with the M S B A contract for Designer Services with Studio G.
So does the motion need to have the amount?
Not necessarily, no, but it's, it's, it's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Not to exceed six hundred and fifty.
Do you want, do you want to put that in there or not?
Could do that, if you want.
Uh, move that the select board vote to authorize Town Administrator James Duggan to execute a contract with Studio G for Designer Services for the Shaker Lane Elementary School M S B A project for an amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-four transfers.
Okay. Um, this is just something we did, um, we, we, we're doing now on a regular basis, uh, to approve of transfers uh, within the operating budget as we get to the end of the fiscal year, uh, with the Municipal Modernization Act in two thousand and nineteen, we're now allowed to do this. Um, the, um, Chair of the Finance Committee did reach out to me today and asked, uh, whether or not, uh, they should be voting on this as well. And, uh, you know, looking at what the, the rules are, FinCom should be voting on it as well to give us that, um, that, yeah, recommendation and, and vote to allow that. So this is, uh, I think last year we did this, we actually may have done it, um, maybe like in your first meeting in, in July, because we have up until July fifteenth when the fiscal year ends. But we're just trying to get ahead of a few things, uh, like the transfer you voted on earlier, and same thing here. So, um, you know, it's basically something you voted on before, it's allowable and basically allows us to, um, fill in any holes and deficits in the budget with other, um, you know, budget savings and other parts of the budget. We haven't really started that process yet, because we still have some time to go, but, um, so, but it just gives us that authorization.
Are there ever any big numbers?
Um, it depends and, and where you are, uh, you know, at the end of the fiscal year. But, um, you know, typically, if we can, if we can cover those deficits with the, you know, with.
Existing.
With existing, then we just take advantage of that, right? And whatever, we don't use goes to free cash.
Will we see a report of what was actually done?
I think that's what you had asked last year. I think that's, you know, what we, and we can commit to do that again, sure.
It just, I, I mean, I trust our town accountant, this just feels like a really broad motion.
Well, it helps us to also know who, who may be. If, if we need to, we saw a large number, that's why I asked about the large number, one, an apartment didn't, why they, why did they not use?
Hundred thousand.
Yeah, hundred thousand dollars. They might have.
Go over a hundred thousand.
And I, I think, Mark, I think we committed to do that last year, we were more than willing to do that again, sure, absolutely.
Okay. Move that the select board vote to authorize the town accountant to transfer any amount from a departmental or other appropriations to any other appropriation to address any deficits within the town budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have fun.
Plans for performance evaluations for the police chief and town administrator. So I, well, I talked to Gary briefly about this too. I think we actually should show, throw the fire chief on this list as well. The, um, inner chief, Coffee, um, because I don't think he's ever had a.
Reform review, so he can have something to.
So work towards, right. So we need to follow the, whatever the, the process we're going to do for the review. The police chief has submitted his evaluation to us. I don't know if everyone has it or I have it.
No.
So I have a copy of it. I can, we can forward it around. We need, in, in our first, your first, your, our first year on the board, basically, everyone did a re, did the ranking and forwarded off to Town Council. Did the aggregation of all of our reviews. Um, I'm wondering if we should just use our H R department to do the aggregation and then, um, a couple of us go off and present the reviews and discuss the reviews with the employees, so.
Yeah, it's not extraordinarily heavy. I just don't, I want to know if she can handle it, I guess, with either question. I mean, it's not a, a heavy lift, it's numbers. Here's everybody's number, here's.
I mean, I, one of us can do the aggregation too, it's not, it's simple math.
It's always done by school committee for the superintendent.
Send it to the chair or whatever, so I'm, I'm willing to do it too. I'm just.
I, I think that, you know, when we use Town Council, there were some special circumstances. I think it would be fine for you to aggregate. Absolutely fine for you to aggregate it.
Okay.
I just, I just wonder if, I, I'm just curious about the two people who go to present it to the, to the employee. There was a lot of debate about, you know, I think whether, whether or not that needs to be made public, that, that version of the review. So, uh, we need to, we need to figure out whether it does.
I don't think it does. I think that's what it was determined, but we should check.
So, so then you would go, say it's you and Gary go to James and you give him his review?
Yeah, the review is public and it has to be, it can, you know, sometimes put it up on the, on their website, right, in the PDF form, but it's not, um, the actual process of it.
Personnel file is not.
No, but you're, but so I'm, so you're, I guess what I'm saying is the aggregation is discussed with the employee.
Yep.
And then the review is written after that discussion and submitted as an official record.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Which is public.
Which is public, yeah, no, I, okay, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on that. Okay.
So. So I have, uh, you haven't sent me your review yet, I don't think. So, well, and I'll talk to, uh, Chief Coffee and ask Skim to do the review. And then I'll send out the reviews that I get from, the three reviews I get, and then people can send their scores back to me. And then I'll aggregate them and if everyone's okay, Gary and I will go and deliver them to the employees.
It's fine with me.
No evil look.
I'm going to throw you under the bus.
And then backing up.
So, okay.
Okay.
Plan.
Uh, the Nagak Hill Orchard, uh, discuss a joint meeting, so we scheduled the joint meeting for Thursday at seven. I believe it's in one oh, is it one oh three?
Yes.
So.
Okay.
And it's, you want to talk about the meeting you guys had?
Um, you know, I think there, there was some understandable frustration with the vote. Uh, Brad Mitchell, who was our chair, um, said that he was, he was, he, he resigned. I mean, I think he basically said that he, he didn't mind, you know, working for the town, but he didn't want to feel like, um, he was wasting his time. Um, and I think a lot of the people on the, on that working group were frustrated, um, with the time we spent and, um, with the vote. So I think that there were a couple of things. I think we will be looking at, like, as a working group, we'll, we'll be looking for direction from this board. We have some options in front of us as far as, you know, do we go after a lease? Do we look for another model? And then I think a larger question is what should that working group do? I mean, that working group's mission was to determine the highest and best use of that property, and we did it. And it was, you know, it didn't succeed. And so I think, um, there's another member who, you know, said basically, I don't know whether I'm going to continue on this board as well. Um, we'll talk, and she, she said she would think about it and talk about it after the meeting with the select board. So, um. So I think, uh, so, yeah, I think there, the two things, one is, um, to, the primary thing, I think, is to discuss with that working group what, you know, what we as a select board want. Do we want them, do we want that group to go out and look for a new tack? Do we want to say, okay, thank you for your service, you're done, you did what you said you were going to do, and we don't, you know, you can act as consultants for us now, but we don't need you to meet as a, as a group anymore, and the select board is going to take it over. I think to some extent, you know, we heard from Mr. Roncier, who said there are a lot of people who were surprised by the vote, and if you brought it back to another town meeting, it might very well pass. So that's another thing we can discuss at the, at the joint meeting. Do you have anything else, Karen, that I? Didn't cover? Shaking her head the whole time.
No, I'm trying to think. The only other thing, well, we, do we want to talk about the trees? Yet, or do we want to stick with this?
Let's talk about, I think, let's talk about that at the meeting on Thursday.
So there's also, we need to decide what we're going to do in the short term, meaning.
Yeah.
This summer, right?
Yep.
Um, in addition to what we're going to do in the longer term, meaning, once we have, decide to, once we have someone that's going to take over management of it.
So we have two. Right, we have two, two short-term things that we're going to do. One is, we need to get a bid on some repairs that need to be made immediately. And we have a list, and I'm going to send that to Ryan, um, because I think we need to send it out to bid. D P W doesn't have the bandwidth to do it. The other thing is that the trees need to be taken out for a couple of reasons, well, three reasons. One is they're no longer commercially viable. Two is they're diseased and they're affecting trees nearby. And three is that many of the uses of that property, which are commercially viable, require us to remove the trees. So we also need to get, start the process of getting a bid on having those trees removed. Um, and that will accomplish two things. One is it will, you know, it'll know what, we'll know what we need to pay. And if we do need to go back to town meeting, we're going to have a, a number to say to the, to the, to the residents, look, if you want to keep this, we're going to have to pay a quarter of a million dollars this year to remove the trees and this many dollars every quarter or whatever after that.
I, you know, I, after sitting through town meeting and, and I, I'm at a point of, this is, this is how we operate. And I, I mentioned before, this is town government, so we, the people have spoken. And, and, you know, we, as a board, might not agree with it, but this is how it works. So here we are, um, with the property, which we own. Now we, I, I was just trying to look at it from what we know has worked, like at Shalon Orchards and trying to make it to a, a point where what would make that property more attractive to a leaser? I was getting, I want to get the buyer out of my head, because that's what was shut down, so. And at the same time, while we're getting the property to that point, if we don't ever get a leaser, we're still making progress on the property to get it in a situation where we'd be in a better position regardless, so. And if that means reducing it, whatever that agriculture number is, it's fifty percent of the property has to be agriculture.
Fifty percent of the A P R land, yeah, so twenty, around twenty-four acres.
We remove the trees, fifty percent of the trees.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that, to me, what are the best trees there? I don't know. I mean, I think the working group might know, is it the lower field? Is it, I don't know. We get that down to a manageable number, now we have this, blame me, shoot me down, I don't know some of this, but we, we've removed fifty percent of the trees, obviously, all the diseased ones are gone. And then whatever else, now we've got a manageable situation where, okay, that's a little bit better for a leaser now. Now they might want to come in and say, well, I want to replant there, or, but it's, now they're not looking at, oh, I've got a, because I think it's unmanageable.
Yeah, agreed, yeah, that's right.
And forget the house, whole separate monster, just the, the property itself. But if we can just continue to work the property into a manageable situation where a leaser could say, yeah, okay, all these trees, I, I've got a vision here now, I could, I can hay this. Orchard this.
Yeah.
You know, blueberry this, honey farm, I don't know, but it gives a, a lot more as opposed to just orchard, which seems to be the, the biggest hangup. And I know the thought, you know, people that are watching, taking down fifty percent of those trees is harsh, but it's still keeping it as an orchard to some degree, which is, which is a, I, I just don't think it's manageable. And that's from me spending two hours on the phone with the mayor from Leominster and the, the chairwoman of, of the.
Shalom.
Friends of.
Yeah, the friends of Shalom, and who's been farming in orchard business for three generations, so. I, she was telling, I, I didn't want to hear all the things, the negatives, she was saying, sell it, sell it, sell it.
She was, really?
Don't go through this, but she's, she's also in a community, she's also in a community where they're not funding it. There, there's zero dollars coming from Leominster.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of pressure on them to keep that orchard. And they're an aging board, there's nine members, and there's no new young blood coming in to, to, to fill this. So they, her worry is what happens, you know, in ten years when we're all in our eighties, you know, age out. So that's a concern, but I don't want to go there. I just, I said, tell me the good things, if we had to keep it, what does this look like? And she had said that, the fifty, you know, right away, that was one of the things that removed fifty percent, that's what they did. They got down to twenty acre or a ma, very manageable amount of trees, and then they started to build up other things. And that's a group that's keeping it. And that, maybe that's something that, who knows, where this adds up, right?
It's a friend's.
Maybe we get a friend's, maybe there is a friend's group that becomes really engaged in this, and that buys us, if anything, time, right? But. You know, this is, I know, we've all, and you guys more than anybody, have probably been up thinking about this, and you've sat through all the, the meetings. I've listened to plenty of people, I know we, we all have our opinions, but we're, we're sitting here faced with the reality of a vote. And the only thing I can figure is get this thing in a better situation every quarter, every year, to, to a potential leaser. Keep putting it out to lease. It's a better situation than it was six months ago, now it's in a better situation than it was a year ago, and now, you know, it's becoming more and more attractive. Because the land's not going anywhere, right? At, at, at the very end of the day.
Unless Zemdar takes it.
And you know, that's, it's a, it's a threat, but if they see what we're doing and how we're moving this thing forward to make this.
If they see what we're doing and they have somebody in place who will lease it.
Yeah.
We will lose it.
But here's the thing, Karen.
But that's a huge if.
The, the rule.
No, no, I, I, you know, my, we can't count on having this land indefinitely and not fulfilling the terms of our obligations with the state. We just can't. That's not a plan.
What are those obligations? It's a very small obligation.
The obligation is to farm fifty percent of it.
Commercial agriculture.
To farm fifty percent of it, and I just said we're cutting the orchard down to fifty percent, so you've met that requirement.
Well, and to get to that point, you know, it's, it's, so, you know, getting rid of all the diseased trees and getting rid of enough trees so that it, the, there's enough critical mass of land in one place that's been destumped that you can hay it. Those might be two totally different prospects, right? All the diseased trees might, you know, there might be a clump here and a clump there, I mean, I don't know. That's, that's something that we can talk to the, to the rest of the Orchard Working Group about on Thursday, but, um, the vote on, uh, by the Orchard Working Group, the recommendation was to remove the apple trees. All of them are past their lifespan.
And, you know, that's a, it's, it's a bold statement, and I, I don't want to ever sit there and face a, that group and say, that's, that's just not true. Because, but I will say that Shalom had the same situation, trees just growing and growing, and they looked ridiculous. And they were able to save an enormous amount of them. But so I, there's a lot of young trees there, I, and I don't even know, I mean, I'm talking the lower field behind the house. I don't know. I just, to keep it. I just, to keep it, I said 50% because at that point, now we are just pruning 50% of trees. We removed the others. Now we only have to prune 50% of these trees. And if the requirement is $500 of fruit half, or agriculture, have to be sold gross, plus, I think it's ridiculous, a dollar an acre over that. We can get someone to donate $1,000 a year to keep that orchard viable with the state before, so it's not taken over. Unless I'm missing something, I looked in the mess, I did. I looked and it was like, all right, so $500.
No, we, but that's, but that's not like, that's not the cost, right? The cost is going to be.
Oh, it's enormous, but this is what we have to present the town.
Yeah, 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 but you're right. And I think that this is a great conversation to have with the working.
It is, but some direction because I don't, I don't want, I don't want to give any misconception to the work group that we're getting this ready for sale.
Well, no, we're, the working group is like, what do you want us to do? Like.
I would change your tune slightly Gary in that you're getting ready for someone to manage it.
Yeah.
Whether we ended up selling it or leasing it, it doesn't really.
Yeah.
And, or whether we're selling parts of it, right? That's the other thing I think we should be looking at is whether we wanted to sell part of the orchard rather than the entire orchard. And we can work with MDR to change the APR so that we could do that and break the, but those are all the discussions we should be having. And the elephant that you're leaving out is the house, right? Which we're paying money on constantly now, right? It's costing us, you know, tens of thou, tens thousand dollars in insurance and we're hoping nothing else goes wrong.
So let's talk about the house a little bit.
But actually, let's go back before we move on.
Yeah.
I, I do think that a conversation about what we need to do to get the thing in shape is the first thing and most important thing that we need to come out of Thursday night with. Because, because we, you know, we can't do nothing. We just can't. So we either need to find a way to sell it or we need to smart, start spending money. And the, the first marching order should probably be, well, what direction do you want to go? And what money do you want to spend on? Like, for example, removing the trees is a great example. But I think we need to make a decision on that and, and tell the working group or have this board take it over and say, here's where we're going in, for the next nine months or, you know.
And here's the cost.
Well, and we'll figure out the cost, right? Because we're going to have to ask town for money.
And it could be ridiculous. This is the reality. This is what the town voted to do.
It's going to be six figures easy and probably seven.
So.
Anyway, so we can go into the house.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, just want to make sure, I want to make sure we get to there on Thursday.
Like I said, I stood up there, I mean, with you and I think another resident. I, I pictured that, you know, houses fall, houses come up, they fall down, they come up. The, the land doesn't change. So the house, I, the sole purpose for keeping the house is so a farmer, it would look attractive. They'd have a place to stay when they farm the land.
And labor, labor housing.
A labor house, makes sense. So since that house is not protected by the APR, I'm assuming there's potential for grant money or CPC money to restore this house.
Could be.
I mean.
I thought that you had to use CPC money to buy the house in order to use it to restore it, but.
The only way you could restore the house with CPC money is if it's historical or, or affordable. You couldn't do it for the farm.
So the historical piece could. It isn't yet, we haven't, was that researched with the?
Yeah, we're, we're working with the Historical Commission to potentially add it.
Lightning strikes and it is, all of a sudden, we can, it gets classified as historical over this process over the next year or whatever. Then other monies become available to us. But I have to believe there's other money that's available and grants to help restore that, that building. Or, and, or I shouldn't say or, and what is this number? If it's classic construction, if it's whatever, separate from the orchard, don't even look at the orchard. Tell us what it costs to renovate. When I say renovate the house, what does that mean even?
Well, it means, it means, I mean, I think gutting and redoing the interior. The, the bones of it are fine.
Okay.
But, but I think that's asking, you know, Ryan or, and the town staff to do a lot of work to put together a proposal to rebuild.
But what's our other choice?
Selling it.
But we, the town said no.
Well, town said no to the APR land that we own that. The house is not part of that.
Okay.
The house is, the house is just like Robinson Road, except it's not historical. The, the house is under the care, custody and control of the select board and doesn't have any restrictions on the land.
So you would potentially sell the house, get it into a situation where you sold it to affordable housing or however, like the dirty property.
Or we could just sell it.
And now you have, or sell it. Now you have a working farm with a barn.
Right.
The money that we were thinking about would more so go into the, that.
Right. And, and I think the working group was very hesitant to do that with the understanding that like, if we wanted to make this into a working farm, the farmer needs a place to live and, you know, you need labor housing. It's very hard, very hard to find labor housing. So, so I think we, you know, that's a possibility, but we should probably, I would try to keep the house and the, and the land connected, you know, and not sell the house off unless it was the last thing we did. But that's just my opinion.
I think I'd like to see this, the sticker shock number. Because that's what, that's what people need to see.
Yeah.
Here, here it is. And here's the cost to maintain this as a town while we're waiting, hopefully to get someone to lease it. Because now it's a much more attractive property. But every year we're dumping in, I don't know how much money. It's a lot and it's staff resources and all these other things.
I think the, yeah, so.
I, I don't.
I think that's what we should talk about Thursday night.
Yeah.
I agree.
I mean, I just don't know how much of the, the board or the Orchard Working Group is going to be looking for. I mean, that's why I wanted to talk now, a little bit of discussion on, before agreeing on, all right, it's not being sold. At least in, in the coming year, we're not even going to talk about selling that property. This is our property. We're going to work on it. We're going to make it attractive.
We're not though?
I, I wouldn't.
I, I, I mean, I haven't ruled that out. I haven't ruled out going back in six months and asking again. We did it with MBTA. We lost this by three votes. Three votes. And at least a dozen people have told me, if I had known, I would have been there and I would have voted.
And I think if it was presented as, you know, we can, we can continue to lease this and spend this much, this many million dollars over the next five years or we can sell it.
Right.
It might also have swayed some people.
Yeah, it's not necessarily cross purposes to be getting these numbers together.
Yeah. I think preparing, as Mark said, preparing for a manager is the right way to go. I think that's a great way to phrase it. It doesn't matter in a way whether we lease or sell. We need to know how to make the property viable.
What costs.
Yeah, yeah.
And the leasing versus the selling are going to have different costs in, in a year.
Short-term.
Right? Short-term, not, not so much short-term because we're going to do the same removal of the trees, short-term. Because we are the manager until at least November. So we have to do our management due diligence for the, through at least next town meeting. But then after that, we can say, we've, we're setting it up for the next manager. However, we do go forward and maybe, you know, in the next six months, we start putting out another RFI to see if someone wants to lease it after we did this. And say, look, we go to November and say, we cleaned it up. We put it up for lease and we still didn't find anyone.
That's one thing that the Orchard Working Group did do immediately is we emailed the, everyone who expressed interest in the RFI. We emailed them back, gave them an update and asked them if they would be interested in leasing. So.
No response.
We'll see what we get.
No, we got, we've gotten like, I think, three responses so far.
Three responses.
And, you know, what's the kicker for us to help? I mean, we need some incentive to help them, a leaser, get in there, right? I mean, that's what it sounds like with this plan for a long-term to do that.
Well, I think someone who leased it is going to have a plan. So let's say they say, in order to be viable, we need this many acres of cleared and stumped trees. And then we, and then we have as a town, like, okay, well, it's 25, you know, it's $200,000 a day. I don't know what it is, $25,000 an acre. Like, so it's a quarter of a million dollars we need to invest. And then this person is willing to sign a, you know, 30-year lease or a 99-year lease or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rob arounds 25 Junior Road, try to be real quick. Attended the ad hoc working group that you're referring to. So heard those things said and very, very late to this game, apologize for that. Having said that, spoke with Diane Crowe earlier today because I'm of the opinion that, you know, this past year, attending numerous meetings, the needs for that three and a half million, just, they're off the charts with regard to what funding is needed. So putting in money that I'm beyond convinced that the town got this one wrong. And that like Webster Property, like MBTA, might take multiple votes in order to get what I view as the vote right. And I respect the people that are voting against it for all the things I heard and have heard. But my understanding from Diane is that a resident has the ability to get a petition signed by 200 voting, you know, voting.
Registered.
Registered people. And you then, if, if I were to present that, if, 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 because I don't want to do anything that is not directionally where you're going or where you think is the best utilization of the property. I want to make that real clear. You say, nope, this is a bad idea, you know, then I stop. But if it's not, then Diane was very clear with me of how difficult it is to, to get a special election or a special town meeting. She identified, you know, the cost right now because the new clicker system is another 3,500 bucks per. So we're up to like 16,500 is her rough estimate of what that costs. But I will tell you that hearing that group the other night talk about a quarter of a million, which maybe a quarter million is just burn money because it just has to be done to make it viable for any seller, you know, anybody that Brad Mitchell mentioned recently, that sort of thing. But having said that, the idea of spending, you know, six figures, potentially seven figures for an indefinite period of time, I, everybody I speak with on both sides of the issue, the people that talk to me and say, you know, the orchard badly managed, poor blah, 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 you know, all that stuff. All respectful. Don't take disrespect by me saying blah, blah, blah to just try and move the discussion forward because it's not intended there. I will tell you that the two people of maybe, I don't know, I'm up to 30 some, that spoke with regard to against the sale, as soon as I said, you're right. Maybe the petition I should be talking about is kind of that big figure number you were talking about. Maybe we, you know, petition should be, I think we ought to be raising property taxes, one to, one and a half to 2% in order to get a viable orchard. No, 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 who is just, you know, adamant with regard to absolutely not. So a decision has to be made. So I wanted to share that with you with, as you look to your Thursday meeting. The other question that I've got is, I, I've looked at the agenda now. Will the public be given the opportunity for input? I greatly appreciate your allowing me to speak tonight, just to plant the seed with regard to, I understand frustrations, I understand the discussion that's just taking place here. But then on the other hand, I hope you understand what I'm saying is I've seen this town have multiple significant votes now, that it takes multiple significant votes to get what I would say is somewhat of a lack of public education, understanding full context, what are the implications? And I think that's something that should be considered as you contemplate what your next moves are, both of the ad hoc working group and of select boards.
Thank you.
Thanks Rob. See you Thursday.
See you Thursday.
Oh, goodie.
Select board retreat and goal-setting session. So this is the time of year we normally do this. I was, I think we were going to go to the department meeting in.
Two weeks, 13 days.
Yeah.
They're all looking forward to it.
I'm sure they are.
That's further on, so, yeah, for your.
So, so after that, we can, we'll have an idea what the departments want and I don't know. Yeah, so we should start figuring out when a good day or time for retreats are, so.
Just for, well, even though it is coming up, but just to figure, when we get to that, I'll ask the question. I'm sorry. All right, I'll ask that. What is the, what is, is it just going to be yourself? Is it going to be all five of you? Is it going to be three, two?
For which, for the department head meeting?
Yeah.
I'd like to be there.
What's the date of it?
June 10th, 9:00 AM.
Well, you know, I won't be there because I'll be on this date.
That's why we did it this way.
That's why you did it this way.
You said June, June 10th, 9:00 AM?
Right, right. So it'd be the morning of this.
One less evening to take up the Wilson. I'll watch it on YouTube.
So I would say that anyone can make it, anyone that.
No, does that, does that have to be posted?
Right, if we're, if there's four of us there, then it would have to be posted and open to the public, right?
Yeah, we've done, that's what we did last time is, yeah. And basically it was like, it was almost like a mini budget session where all the departments just went around and said what their goals were for the upcoming year, you know, the SWATs.
Help us to, yeah, understand what we're doing.
What can we do to help you? What are your, what are your goals? What do you need help with?
Yeah. So, but ultimately the goal should be in support of what we're doing too. I mean, so it's got to be kind of synergistic, so.
All right. So then we're going to just do the goals scheduling, the session scheduling after that?
So sometime after, yeah.
Yeah, the end of June probably.
Okay.
Or the, or July.
I mean, while you're talking about it, I mean, that's, that's, that's the window you're at now. So before anybody else's calendar fills up, I mean, you are probably talking about the end of June. You probably don't want to get into July. But.
Are we thinking Friday afternoon again?
That worked well last year. We can do that. So that would be either the 21st or the 28th?
21st, yes, the carnival, I don't know if that plays in there.
21st what?
The carnival, but doesn't really play in there.
21st isn't great.
We can all go, I've gotten candy apples.
So.
28th is better for me.
How about the 28th?
Yeah, it's wide open.
Yeah, okay.
Potential retreat, retreat.
Yeah, that other week I'll be in, yeah, I'll be at it.
You're at a 10, 28?
The 20, 20, the 19th or the 21st.
But the 28th?
But the 28th is good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. So that was easy.
What do we think on that?
Like noon to four, what did we do last time?
I think they brought you out of your speaking.
At the, at the fire station?
Oh boy.
Yep.
Or do you want to do it in the evening?
On a Friday? No, thank you.
Okay.
I love you mean it, but no.
You're already developing a cough, just let them know.
You have a dentist appointment, I think.
Yeah, clearly that's not the case. Yes, noon to something?
We, we can try like one to four, keep it a little shorter.
One might be better because I do, I have a standing meeting at 11:30 on my guest list.
That's fine.
So one to four.
All right. That's good.
Thank you.
The meeting with department heads, we, we set the time, we'll post at room 103, June 10th, 9:00 AM.
Great, perfect.
One to four-ish, maybe more five. We're going to go down three hours. I think we did four or five hours last time, didn't we? Four hours?
I think it was one to four last time.
It went longer.
I may have gotten a little bit older.
I think we went over, but yeah, I think it was only three hours last time.
And leasers can cancel off as hours that day.
Okay, yeah.
Hopefully that's when I sign up.
Okay. Discuss and potentially vote on the Affordable Housing Trust under the One Stop Grant Application. So the Affordable Housing Trust is going to put in a One Stop Grant Application, hopefully next week. We, the money will be used to.
The One Stop is on a larger picture. We'll be making, and we're, we're going to request that the select board take, take action on, on its entirety. The Affordable Housing Trust One Stop Grant has three components, one of which is the Affordable Housing Trust component, which is a budget of approximately $120,000, which is their mini grants to take care of some immediate health and safety issues with the house, such as if there's a leaking roof or a foundation issue, electrical or plumbing, and there'd be many grants for affordable homeowners that are, that are there.[1757.94] And those would, the terms of that, from where I understand how it is, has been discussed, it has been, it is a straight grant. I don't believe there's any, there's no deferment, there's no, there's nothing recorded on, on the property. That's the way I understand it. The other two components of, of this is a, is the public housing, infrastructure for housing of the King Street Commons area. 550, 550 King Street of $4 million.